Good afternoon, everyone. It's 12 o'clock and I call this meeting to order. Casey Griffin on our staff will call the roll to establish a quorum.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Kim.
Here.
Dr. Emily How.
Harple standing in for Dr. Emily How.
Mr. Nate Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove. Chairman, you have 10 members present.
Thank you, Casey. I now declare that a quorum is present and we are duly convened. Pursuant to Section 8 of Policy 1.400, the Board Meetings Policy, workshops are a meeting of the State Board, sitting as a committee of the whole. Section 1, subsection E of the same policy, in accordance with TCA 844108, requires all votes taken during electronic meetings of the Board to be taken by call of the roll. In accordance with this policy and the law, I move that the State Board dissolve itself into the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of conducting our workshop. Is there a second?
Go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike Edwards, I second.
Mr. Edwards provides the second. Now, Mr. Griffin will call the roll.
Mr. Collins.
Aye.
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen. Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have 10 ayes.
Thank you. I declare that we are in the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of conducting our workshop. Before we move into the agenda, I do want to welcome all who are joining us today. I am pleased to recognize Commissioner Schwinn. For later on in our agenda, she will be presenting several items. We're particularly interested in hearing all about the Reading 360 program and special legislative updates from her, as well as several other important updates. I also want to welcome special guest Dr. Matthew Owen, who is joining us from Tassau to discuss broadband access and adoption in Tennessee. This is a critically important subject matter to the Board, and so we're eager to hear from him and engage in discussion. Our Executive Director, Dr. Sarah Morrison, has a few opening remarks. Dr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, public and colleagues at the Department of Education, others joining us today. As Lillian said, we have an exciting work session planned for today. We have a busy meeting tomorrow, so we are excited to have all of our special guests, as Lillian mentioned, and anticipate a great discussion today on a number of topics. I am just looking, Madam Chair, to see if Penny's with us yet. I think if she's not, we can turn potentially to Ally Gaffey on our team. She's got a series of presentations related to the charter work that we could turn to first if needed.
This is Amy, if I may. I just got a text from some colleagues at the Department. She should be here momentarily. Another meeting has run a few minutes long.
Oh, great. Yep, I just got a message from her as well. Well, great. Well, like I said, we're excited for a full discussion today on a number of topics, and we'll give the Commissioner just another moment to join us. Any other comments from our Board members before we get started?
I don't know. Or at least I see.
Oh, fantastic.
Excellent. Very good. Commissioner Schwinn, we welcome you. We're excited to hear the several updates that you have for us, and we're going to turn it over to you to begin your update. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think I got you. Sorry. Hello, everyone. It's nice to see you. I am hopping off a superintendent's call and hopping directly on, so want to be able to go through what I know is a very robust number of slides, lots of things to talk about, lots of exciting things happening in the state right now. So, want to, I think, I'm not sure who's progressing, but I'll go ahead and just note, we can go to the next slide to kind of dive in. So, generally, we're looking at the workshop today. We're going to be talking about a few things, but always want to root things in our strategic plan. And that has that focus on academics, ensuring every child has access to a high-quality education, whole child, the academic and non-academic needs, like mental health, nutrition, special education supports, et cetera, and then our educators, who've been working so hard throughout this pandemic. So, moving to the next slide and looking a little bit at the agenda and what we are going to talk about today, we'll cover ESSER and GEAR 2.0, so that new round of federal funding. We will talk about Reading 360, the $100 million initiative to focus on reading in the state, and then we will talk about special sessions. So, again, a lot of things to talk about. What I'm planning to do is pause after each of these three big categories, just because it's so much information, and be able to do some Q and A, and then have a block left at the end, just to kind of set up expectations, since I know questions will come up. But feel free to interrupt me at any point if any of you have questions on one of the slides in particular. I certainly want this to be interactive and not me talking at you for 90 minutes. So, for ESSER and GEAR 2.0, want to be able to first go, and the next slide will cover what this is. So, for ESSER and GEAR 2.0, ESSER 2.0 is how we are lovingly talking about the second round of funding that we received as a state. So, as a reminder, we got ESSER, which is part of the CARES Act, and it's the amount that's set aside specifically for K-12 schools. We got 1.0, and that was just about $260 million, and that came in the late spring, early summer of 2020. This is the package that was approved in late December by Congress and signed into law, and that provided $1.1 billion for K-12 education in the state of Tennessee. How it works is it's allocated based on the Title I share of funding, so every district's going to get a different per pupil amount based on their proportion of Title I students. 90% of the funds go directly to our LEAs, and 10% are reserved for SEA or State Agency activities. That's approximately $110 million for the SEA, and then $990 million for our districts. In terms of allocations, those amounts were sent to LEAs on January 7th, and their plans will be due in the next couple of months, which we'll talk about. The U.S. Department of Education and Congress both had two areas of emphasis. The funds can be used essentially in whatever way is best for a local district in response to COVID, but in this round, they did say that they wanted to see an emphasis on learning loss and facility improvement, specifically things like HVAC, air quality systems, expanding the size of rooms to allow for more distancing, or other things that would need to happen to allow for buildings to be even safer and to have some long-term impacts for the future. GEAR 2.0 is the governor set aside, so every governor in the country has a set aside to address education-based issues. That funding does explicitly carve out money for private schools. That is different than ESSER 1.0. We remember, or I'm sorry, GEAR 1.0. I think we remember in GEAR 1.0, we had a lot of conversation about equitable services, and that's kind of the share that would go to private schools. There was a lot of back and forth and confusion, a lot of changing policies and guidance at the federal level. So, what they've done this round for GEAR 2.0 is they have mandated a requirement that every state take their GEAR money and set aside a prescribed portion that must go to private schools. There's no, there are no options. It is a formula. In Tennessee, out of the $100 million in GEAR 2.0, $72 million is set aside for private schools. It is also required in the law that the SEA, so TDOE, administer those funds to non-publics. And any of the remaining funds that are not used by our non-publics goes back into that GEAR pot to address education-related needs. In that perspective, our non-publics have two options. They can participate in this GEAR 2.0 funding, and there are restrictions related to reporting of information and monitoring and other things, or they can participate in the Paycheck Recovery Act. They cannot participate in both. So, part of the council that the Department will need to be providing over the next month or two is to figure out which one our non-publics will participate in, and then how much money they will be using out of this mandated pot. The balance of that goes back to GEAR. So, I know that is just a very big difference from last time, and I want to make that clear because we don't have a final amount of GEAR funding because we have to have the conversations with non-publics first. On the next slide, and this is the last slide for ESSER GEAR, just to kind of give everyone a forewarning, but it's a timeline. So, our timeline for plans is all LEAs must submit their plans by March 1st, 2021. That is coming up very, very quickly for everybody. We do have some districts who've already submitted their plans. From a, from a department perspective, I got a couple of questions in advance from some of you on this. The Department is not allowed by law to tell districts or mandate how districts spend their funds. We just have to make sure it is within the boundary set up by the federal law, but we cannot prescribe that. We cannot limit funds or direct funds. And so, I think that's something that I just want to make very, very clear. I will also say candidly, the Department does not want to do that. Local districts have the best idea of how they want to spend their local dollars. The second part of that is allowability. We did automatically get what's called the tidings amendment, which extends our ability to use the funds for a year. So, all of these funds expire September 30th of 2023. So, we've got to spend this $1.1 billion plus the $260 million from the spring. All of that essentially depends in the next two and a half years. It is, it is a fast process to spend that amount of money, especially given that for right now, the legislature has committed to, for this school year, the full funding in terms of BEP. And so, unlike other states who did not do that, Tennessee did. What you are seeing in other states is that they decrease their version of the BEP and use the extra dollars to supplement or supplant that amount. We didn't do that, so this is all additional funding that districts will need to spend. In the reporting side, ESSER 2.0 does require a much more stringent amount of reporting than ESSER 1.0. The federal government or U.S. Department of Education was, I think, wanted to see a lot more reporting and wanted to see drawdowns at a much faster rate than what every state was doing, and that's at the local level, the state level, which was essentially when, when people decided to do it, they did it. But I think there was also a lot of pushback that we certainly heard from the U.S. Department of Education and from Congress related to, if you all need the funds and they're emergency funds, we want to make sure that you are spending them, so you need to show drawdowns. So, the requirement now is that we report on that very frequently. We will be requiring that on a monthly basis, so every district will need to report on what they have drawn down. We are a reimbursement state, so essentially districts draw down money, show us the receipts, and then it gets reimbursed to them. That will need to happen on a monthly basis. That will be published on our website, and we do expect it will be published on the U.S. Department of Education's website. So, that is a little bit about ESSER and GEAR 2.0, but want to be able to answer any initial questions that anyone might have on this second round of federal funding or any projections for what we are hearing about in ESSER 3.0. So, happy to answer those questions if y'all have them.
Commissioner Schwinn, you know, the, the part about drawing down the funds, and if for any reason they're not drawing those funds down as they're required to do, what's, what is the penalty? I mean, obviously, if they're not spending them, they're not drawing down, we don't have evidence that they're spending the money, but they could be. They're just not reporting or doing the appropriate process. So, what are the ramifications of that, if you could describe that for us briefly?
Sure. So, there is a federal law related to that, and what happens is the U.S. Department of Education will flag that directly for states and monitor and say, we are not seeing drawdowns at this, or we are monitoring at the state level. The federal law does require that all of our LEAs draw down funds at a regular interval. That should be at minimum. Right now, it's quarterly. That is moving to monthly. They do expect that for ESSER, that should have been done monthly. And so, what happens is if, if drawdowns are not happening quick enough, and that's the only way for the state or the federal government to know if money's being spent, you could, you could spend all your money and just not have drawn down. There's no way to know. The federal law that has been included does say that we are not allowed to allocate any additional funding until we see the drawdowns. It's essentially show that you're using this pot of money before we'll give you more. That is very explicitly written into federal law, so that is the essentially quote-unquote the consequence or the penalty there, is that until you draw it down, you actually aren't allowed to get any additional funding. The other consequences for every delay of funding, that's why we're trying to move this process quickly, is it is a hard stop deadline on September of 2023. So, if you do not spend the funds by that time, you do have to revert them back to the federal government, and they're redistributed to other, other states or localities.
So, it is possible that someone, an LEA, could have spent the money or a large portion of it, but if they don't do what they need to do by the time they're supposed to do it, they could lose that reimbursement opportunity, if I'm understanding this correctly. So, they're at risk of getting, of not getting that money back.
That, that is correct, and so there's two, there's two parts to that. There is either, you know, you get delayed, and when you actually get the access to your second round of funding, we have had instances in the state where the funding was not drawn down in time, so the receipts actually were after the allowability period, and we did have to give funds back to the federal government because they were not spent by districts in time. So, that is absolutely something that we've seen before. The Congress is very, very clear, they do not want to see that now, and that's why they've added such a robust reporting requirement this time around for ESSER 2.0.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner, this is Bob, this is Bob Eby. I've got a question. Is there, are there restrictions on how they can use, districts can use those funds such that it may prevent them from being able to use the funds by September? Are there significant restrictions on how they can use it?
No. I mean, my read of it and the way that the Department is interpreting it is very broad spending ability. So, for example, as long as you can make some kind of link to COVID, it is an allowable expense. So, we are seeing a lot of our districts focusing on deferred maintenance in facilities, which is a great use of funds. It's really hard to do that local fundraising to be able to get money for facilities. You can use that for salaries if folks are working on things related to COVID. It, it is very, very broad, and it also allows you to go back to when the emergency was declared, so March of 2020. Any receipts from that point moving forward are technically allowable to be used for that reimbursement.
So, there's really no reason that the districts should not be spending this money, then, what I think I hear you say?
No, there's no reason why they, why they shouldn't be spending this money at all, I think, especially given the flexibility.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, this is...
Go ahead.
One, just, this is Mike Edwards. How are you? One thing that Bob said, listen, if this capital maintenance, and it goes through procurement process, it goes through design, it goes, we're talking about sometime in '23 to make all those payments out, and I assume it's based on payments and not contract to pay, they're going, they better start right now if they're going to do it, because they don't, that's going to crimp them real hard.
That's exactly...
And I agree with what Congress is saying to do, they just need to get on it.
I couldn't agree more, and that's part of when we are talking to districts, one of the things we are flagging is that if they want to do substantial facilities work, every district has that opportunity, and we do have a limited amount of construction companies and folks who can actually do the work, especially because CARES Act, there's lots of other industries outside of education that are getting relief dollars. So, we are trying to encourage very rapid and urgent addressing of this issue because of that, I think, those very tight timelines. If we get into a crunch, the Department will also provide some advisory capacity to districts about what they can code towards CARES money or the, this ESSER money to free up some more flexible recurring dollars, and that would happen more in that 2022, '23 space, potentially to allow for some additional flexibility if they need to extend the use one way or another. But as long as it's COVID-related, that would be allowable. But yes, it is, it is an urgent situation if they're doing facilities projects.
Two, two questions. This is Larry Johnson. First, can you give me a little description of the GEAR money and how non-public schools, whether it's that available for, what's the process to get there? And then, secondly, how do charter schools go through and approach this?
Yep, so two very good questions. The first is going to be a little less challenging than the second to preview. So, for private schools, we do consultations, so that was happening at the district level. So, the district that, that the private school, non-public was housed in, boundary-wise, would typically do those conversations. We've now, this law bypasses that. So, essentially, we will do consultation with private schools, and that's a direct allocation that would happen from the SEA, so the Department, directly to the private school based on their enrollment. Those consultations will be happening between now and the end of the month through our, our Office for Non-Public Schools, webinars, technical assistance, et cetera. Private schools will be required, if they participate, to do the same level of reporting in terms of how they're spending the funding, turning that money in, et cetera, again, for that public transparency piece. But it is a much more streamlined process than what we typically see. Now, for the charter school side, it is, there were a lot of questions, I think, coming off of ESSER 1.0. Those answers haven't changed, but now we have better line of sight. So, for charter schools, since we don't have charters that operate as LEAs, some, some states charter schools are their own districts. We don't really have that here. So, for that, from that perspective, charter schools reside as a school of the LEA. The money goes to the LEA, so let's just say ABC District gets $1 million. What they are responsible for doing is determining how that money should be distributed amongst their district or school. Again, there is no authority for the Department to prescribe or require any allocation of funds. And so, what we saw under ESSER 1.0 is that different charter schools got different per pupil amounts, which that is, that is at the discretion of the LEA, and that charter schools before submitted their plans and needs to the LEA. The LEA could then provide information about here, you know, here's what we're willing to fund or not. So, that's going to look different across all of our districts in terms of how they allocate that funding. Traditionally, what we've seen and what we would expect is that our districts are saying, here, our district-wide support benefit everybody. From the remaining amount, we saw that LEAs were then dividing amounts to charter schools accordingly. So, again, that is, that is completely within the purview of the local district, and that's because that, we have seen that that looks very different across the four districts who, who had public charter schools and who received funds.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just one question about, I guess, reporting and accountability. Is there a difference between ESSER and GESER in that regard?
In accountability for the funds?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. So, there are a couple of things. So, both require kind of an annual reporting function specifically to the federal government. For the LEA side, they have a lot of restrictions in terms of it has to be COVID-related spending for their K-12 schools. They can't use it for community-based projects, et cetera. The GEAR funding is much more open. There aren't restrictions on who, the scale, et cetera. It is a very governor-specific set of, of money, so he is able to determine what that allocation should look like, for what reasons, who benefits, et cetera. It is more flexible in that. It is still required to address broadly COVID, but I think the definition of that is, is very, very broad. For districts, there are very technical and specific things that you can, you can match to COVID.
This is Nate Morrow. Just real quick, you were talking about how you can use this money to increase classroom size or distancing and those things. Is there any thought to sort of after this, when you now have these large classrooms, to, to not let what was currently a solution become a problem by adding 35 or 40 kids back to non-distance classes, and just how we can control some of the unintended consequences of making things COVID-safe, but later on, not let those things have negative effects?
Yes, sir. Great question. So, the, the short answer is yes, there are still requirements on class sizes in the state, and so districts would still need to submit class-size waivers for consideration if they were going to increase class sizes beyond those statutory requirements. So, I think that's one, that's one fail-safe that is currently in place.
Okay.
I see a question in the chat around can money be used for teacher bonuses related to this year, and the answer is yes, as long as you can tie those bonuses to COVID. So, we, we received that question also from a superintendent, so I just want to give the, the difference there. So, you can't use the money and say, I'm giving every single person in the district a bonus for the sake of, I want to give everyone a bonus. You can say, I'm giving every single person in this district a bonus because of these specific things related to COVID. It's a bureaucratic technicality, but from an accounting and auditing perspective, you have to note that in order to be able to justify to the federal government why the bonus was necessary. But you absolutely can use funds for that if you tie it directly to COVID.
One, one other question. With the, the current recovery negotiation that's going on in, in Washington right now, do you anticipate additional funding in this particular space with the new administration?
I do. I, I do. I think what we would expect, and right now, the Republicans and the Democrats are pretty far apart in terms of the number, but it is, they are still talking about a number. So, that usually means something's going to happen, and, and I think there's been a lot of talk about what that means. Both proposals currently include K-12 education. The, I think the higher number would mean about $2 billion, just over $2 billion for Tennessee. The lower number is closer to where we are, are now, a little less than a billion. So, it, it would still be a pretty significant amount of money for K-12 schools if that did move forward. I will say that, you know, from the, from the state's perspective, and I think some of the things that I, I find challenging about the federal law is it is very, very prescriptive in terms of, I think, use of dollars for future reference. But as an example, we just purchased as a state across districts, and certainly the governor set aside that $50 million for technology, a lot of computers and devices. There is no mechanism right now for us to replace them. Districts don't have an additional recurring amount of money to replace devices. The state does not have an additional amount of money in the BEP. There are lots of different reasons why we have this big influx, and then there's no way to kind of continue that over time. I think one of the things I heard in some of my conversations with a, a small group of superintendents was it would be nice if we could use this third pot of ESSER dollars to be able to put into a long-term fund where you can get the, the earnings of that, that would essentially pay for computers and devices in perpetuity. If you put, let's say we get $2 billion. If we had $2 billion, you put a billion of that into a tech fund, the earnings on that could allow for us to fund a computer for every child on a four- to five-year rotational basis, so they get one essentially in every grade band forever. So, when you think about, like, for us, especially because we aren't seeing the reductions that other states are getting, it would be really nice to be able to say, we are rewarding states who are fiscally conservative and who have some of the funds and are not seeing that same kind of economic issues that other states are, and we want to be able to invest this in something that's actually going to benefit districts in the long term, but right now that is not allowable. But that's one of the things that we've been pushing on, so that it's even allowed for conversation for the General Assembly to decide if that's what they would want to And that's how I feel about that. Sorry, I went a little bit on a tangent there. Any other questions on ESSER or GEAR? And we can come back to it and maybe go to Reading 360. I know some of these are going to start to, to come together. And so, and we'll go two slides forward on Reading 360. So, Reading 360 is a comprehensive vision for Tennessee literacy. It is, we are using in terms of source of funds, to be clear, the Department received two $20 million grants, competitive grants, most awarded state in the country for early literacy work in 2020. So, $40 million came from competitive grants, $60 million was the funding that came from a different combination of GEAR and ESSER for the state set aside. And that, I, I do want to be very clear, is we were only able to do that because the governor set aside money from the CRF to support things like technology, PPE, disinfecting things for classrooms, et cetera. That $200 million of investment for other programs came from the CRF, which allows for us to have, I think, a real, a real opportunity to invest in early reading. On the next slide, this is just kind of the brief overview of the last decade as it relates to literacy. I want to make sure that I am being explicit in saying, this is not the first time that we have talked about literacy, and this has been a focus of the state over the last decade. And I think really, really strong and important things happened to allow us to get to the spot we are in right now. So, race to the top allowed for a lot of teacher training and district and school leader development, which was critical in kind of that starting point for a lot of work in the last decade, and that built on, I know, a decade before that of, of investment in reading. We had Read to Be Ready from 2015 that really focused on coaching in classrooms and literacy camps, so how do we make sure we're getting to that teacher level? And then Reading 360 was taking those lessons learned over the last 10 and frankly 20 years in the state about what has worked, what has not worked, and why, and then looked at the rest of the country to see what has been most effective, and said, one of the things we are seeing is that addressing one part of the reading spectrum is actually not the most effective, because there are all sorts of other things that end up popping up. So, can we look at this in a comprehensive format and try to say, we are going to address it completely on the horizontal spectrum as well as the vertical? So can we look at this in a comprehensive format and try to say, we are going to address it completely on the horizontal spectrum as well as the vertical? Um, and we have this moment in time where we have the funding to do so. And that is, I think, has been one of the barriers before. It is a lot of kids and it is really hard to teach a child to read. Um, so having this one-time investment and this moment in time, I think, is really important. Um, in terms of, of the next slide, and I'll go through these two relatively quickly, but wanted to just root ourselves in the data. Um, what we've seen on twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen, this is on N A T E, that's that National Assessment of, of Education Progress, and it measures grade four reading. That gold bar at the bottom are the, um, percentage of students who are advanced. The orange bar is proficient, and then the blue and gray bars that you see up top are, uh, basic and below basic. What you want to see is those, those kind of gold, green, and the orange bars to continue to move up and the blue and the gray to move down. What we've seen is that it's been relatively unchanged over, over the last, um, eight or nine years or so. Um, and that is something that I think, um, we are just looking at in terms of national, um, nationally, we are seeing the same types of trends. Um, on the next slide, I'm looking at Tennessee-specific data on our state test, because I think it's important to look at multiple measures and, and see, um, if we see different trends. That, uh, teal bar, um, on the bottom is third grade, and that is on the E L A T cap. That is not a reading test, it is not a literacy test, it is a test on our standards, but it does assume a grade level, um, a level of great, meeting grade level expectations in K through two, which do have significant reading standards associated, as you well know. What we've seen is that from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, we had a steady decline. Um, we were just about fifty percent in twenty thirteen, um, and now we are floating in the thirty-five to thirty-seven percent range, um, when we look at twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. In eighth grade, we had that high that you can see in twenty fifteen, um, and, and that was twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen was pretty steady in the forty-seven to fifty percent range. We have now seen a steady decline, um, down to twenty-seven percent, um, meets or above expectations or meets or on track or masters is the current terminology. Um, and that does have implications down the road. Those students who were twenty seventeen, when you think about those as eighth graders, those are students where we're seeing their A C T scores now. We are seeing slight drops in A C T, but you can expect to track that over time. So we would expect those students in twenty nineteen, when you're seeing their A C T scores, that, that tracks along. That also goes to preparedness for, um, higher ed and post-secondary. So it's just something that is front of mind in terms of English Language Arts performance. Um, on the next slide, in terms of why does this matter? Um, I know you all know this, but I, I think it is worth saying, we know that students who are not reading on grade level by that critical third grade marker are four times more likely to drop out. We also know that when they are on grade level, they are more likely to graduate, complete post-secondary programs, and have more economic and physical health later in life. Um, they are more significantly likely to stay on track over time as well. And I think, um, one of the hard parts of this, I have a third grader, my oldest eldest is a third grader at home. Um, she just turned nine last week, and so when you think about the impact of what she is doing right now in terms of reading and some of the implications that has, it's very, very real and I think personal to me in a different way. And so we think about all of our students, about seventy-five thousand kids per grade level. It's incredibly important. They are proficient readers, on-grade level readers by third grade, and that takes work in third, but it certainly is most important to address before that. Um, and so kind of what are we doing about it? Um, and, and so on the next slide, very briefly, it is a focus on phonics. Reading three sixty is not specific to just early literacy and reading. It does cover K through twelve and pre-K through twelve, but in that early, in those early grades, there is a strong focus on phonics, which is the phonological awareness. That is kind of how you hear sounds and say sounds, phonics and word recognition, the translation between how you hear and say sounds to print symbolic representation, and then fluency, how well you put those sounds together to make word sentences and read that fluently so you can understand what they're saying. There is a whole section on knowledge building and vocabulary and all sorts of good stuff that happens after that. But we want to make sure students can read the words so that they can build meaning from what those words say. Um, on the next slide, um, this is what we will cover, but reading three sixty has eight components. Again, we are trying to address across the spectrum of reading. So that means we have to address teacher training and coaching, district implementation, supports for families at home. How do we benchmark and measure progress, and how do we bring lots of people in? So that this is not a Department of Education initiative, and it isn't. Um, we are a part of this initiative, but it really should be owned and driven at the local level as a statewide focus on reading. So to start, um, and, and starting with teachers, because they are the most important part, um, uh, of this process, um, and on the next slide, this talks about our future teachers. So our future teachers, um, and those are students who are currently in high school, who want to be educators, and those who are in our educator preparation program. But we want to make sure that we have teaching as a profession courses, um, available to high school students so they can also practice teaching children how to read early. Um, we have the Grow Your Own Network, which allows for paraprofessionals, high school students, college students to be able to get their degree for free and study under one of our amazing current teachers. And we also have a lot of work that we are doing with the federal government on apprenticeship programs. Um, our goal is to try and see if we can utilize existing federal dollars that go unused um, to help support an expansion of Grow Your Own so that teachers can get on-the-ground, hands-on experiences before their first day solo in the classroom. I want to call out on the right, though, um, in terms of increasing educator diversity, which I know is a very significant, um, area of focus for, for this board. Um, we were thrilled that in the, um, most recent Ed Trust review of kind of, um, educator diversity work across the country, Tennessee was one of a very few number of states who was all green, um, and, and was the only state to be all green in, in just about everything. So, um, very excited about the amount of investment and work in this space and what that can mean for students across the state. Um, the next part of the teacher component is really focusing on our Ed Prep and Leader Prep, um, programs and innovations. Um, this will link over a little bit into the literacy bill, but it's essentially saying that we want to provide innovation grants to our Ed and Leader Prep programs and providers so that they can start to develop courses and content that really support early literacy. Um, and so we will be providing and rolling out grant opportunities specific to, um, content around foundational skills, and that includes how to use data and assessment in a way that helps to support children, high-quality instructional materials, um, and those are on the adopted list that you all, um, approve and post. So off the state, uh, board adopted list, how do, how are districts able to use those materials? And then developmentally appropriate strategies so that we are making sure to teach in a way that, um, all students are able to access. Um, on the, on the next slide and final slide for teachers, if we're thinking about those who are thinking about becoming teachers, the last slide is now they are actually becoming teachers. What are we doing for teachers now? Um, the department has, um, is, will be providing a two-week optional training that has one week of asynchronous support. It's an online series of modules that teachers can take, followed by a face-to-face training over the summer. Um, that program allows for a one thousand dollar stipend for successfully completing. Um, and I think for a lot of folks, what we're hearing most importantly is that classroom, um, kit of consumables, um, that's like gold. And so those are the decodables, um, those are additional resources that teachers would receive, those pre-K two teachers, um, to be able to participate. We'd expected, um, about eleven to fourteen thousand teachers who, who might want to participate. We are getting early projections that will be significantly higher. Um, and so this was, I think this is going to be a great opportunity for us to provide free and optional P D for early learning, um, and early literacy across the state. Um, I will see, I will pause there to see, are there any questions on the teacher part? Then we're going to get into districts. It's a, it's a, there's a lot for reading three sixty, so I don't want to go too far in.
This is Bob again.
Yes, sir.
As the E P Ps develop their content courses, are they, uh, and maybe this is for Victoria, I don't know. Are they working collaboratively together so that there's a fairly consistent approach to do that? Or is each E P P doing their own? And then you won't find out for three to five to seven years down the road if they've been successful or not. How, how are we assuring that, you know, what they're doing to develop that content is going to get translated to the teachers and get into the school system?
So I, I'll answer for reading three sixty and the connection to the literacy bill. And if there's anyone, uh, I think from the state board, and Sarah, I'll defer to you if there's, um, additional content you want to, um, provide there. For this, these are grants that would, will pick a select few, um, providers who would be able to develop courses and content. That is kind of this pilot that would be coming up this school year. So they would have the school year to really see what works, what doesn't, make adjustments, et cetera. Um, and that would be made freely available to any Ed Prep in the state who wants to do that work. Um, the literacy bill that just passed does require, um, some attention to the standards, some revisions there, and that would be policy work that happens at the state board level. Um, the, the timeline that's in the literacy bill does allow for, um, E P Ps to do all of this course and content creation to match whatever standards you all pass, to ensure that whatever courses and content they're developing are aligned with any revised standards. And then we can test that out before the required implementation of those standards, um, the year after next. And there would be a set of courses and content that have been tested and proven that E P Ps can use. Right now, there's no requirement that they use any of the courses and content being developed by their peers, but certainly that's something that, that, um, I think could be considered and reviewed in a future board meeting. Sarah, I don't know if I can add, sorry.
Nothing more to add it, it right now, but I mean, as you said, there's a lot of moving parts, and we're really excited to dig in with, um, our partners at the department. So thank you, Commissioner, because I think there's so much about this reading program that I think will start to hit, you know, not only our Ed Prep providers, but our teachers in the classroom, and all of them getting the same messages and the same quality content will be really important. So certainly, as the dust settles here, we'll all be digging in together to take our parts and, and run together to make this happen quickly.
Yep.
Well, and, and that's why this is, this is a comprehensive approach. And, and so kudos to the department and, and your leadership, Penny, for bringing this all together. Because I, I do see it, you know, you have the three sixty for a purpose. It's intended to capture all of the elements that make this be, that would cause this to be successful. Um, because we've talked about it for years, and certainly there has been some progress and some declines. And so we want to get our arms around it and move forward. So, um, that's why, you know, including E P Ps, it's, it's, it starts, where does it begin? So, uh, when I'm prepared, and we know from survey data that educators are saying, but I wasn't taught how to teach the science of reading, or reading period. And so it has to begin certainly there, and then again, in the classroom. So what comes first? In the classroom, they have to be able to get that first. But anyway, you get the point, three sixty, and I'll shut up so that you can move back into sharing the rest of the presentation because it's so full of information that's important for the board to know. And, uh, we'll talk more about it after you conclude, because we do want to talk about some plans that we have at the state board level to, um, really sink our teeth in it, to beyond where we've been able, or where we've not gone in the past, move forward in the future. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Swin, Larry Jensen, is there overview implementi- implementation timeline? Or one page where you kind of, a Gantt chart or something that's showing the, the flow of this thing? I'd be curious if there, if that exists.
Yes, sir, it does. So, um, what the department does is, um, two years ago, we implemented a performance management system. So any work stream that has funding or staffing associated with it has a, a, essentially a project plan that covers, you know, theory of action, um, kind of what is the strategy, what is the research behind it, performance metrics, timelines, milestones, all of that. Um, so we have that for every discrete part of this plan. We also have, um, a Gantt chart in terms of when does it begin, when is planning, um, procurement processes, implementation, ongoing work, et cetera. So I did not include that in this, in this, um, presentation, but we certainly have that and are happy to get that to you.
Uh, uh, I'm just curious, I'd like to see the, see the timing of the thing. Thank you.
Sure. So we can move forward to districts, which is our next big group, um, of, of, um, addressing. And so on the next slide, implementation networks. So the four components of the implementation networks are looking at regional, again, opt-in. Um, and implementation network is really about districts working together with one another to help think about how to implement literacy practices and high-quality materials at the local level. So really kind of taking the department out of it. We are facilitating from a financial and logistics perspective, but having that peer-to-peer contact is incredibly important. The implementation networks are intended to support our districts and school leaders for how to implement, um, materials and, and practices decided at the local level. Um, and then we have, um, that for early learning as well as for, um, grades three through twelve. So on the right, you'll see what those two implementation networks are. We just announced yesterday our regional implementation network, and those are forty-eight districts across the state. Um, and that is to focus on implementing whatever materials they adopted at the local level. Um, and you have a mentor district, and then that mentor district then supports, um, six or seven other districts, um, I'm sorry, five other districts to be able to, um, figure out, okay, here are the materials that we all implemented. They might ha- all have different materials. What are the best ways, what are the strategies, what are the, um, resources that will be needed to make sure that teachers have what they need to use those materials well? That again is the federal grant that we received. Uh, we will have a mentor district in each of our eight regions, and then they will have a group of five districts that will, um, they will all work together. We have the same structure for our early literacy cohort networks, and that's really about, um, again, that funds a lot more districts over a shorter period of time. But that is saying, we need to make sure that districts, again, can work together in figuring out what are the best strategies and practices for implementing this foundational literacy skills approach, a phonics-first approach, again, using the materials that are adopted off the, off the state board list. So that, that is a grant announcement that will, um, be forthcoming, but it is, um, over seventy-five districts. It is, um, not a competitive grant, so we want to make sure anyone who wants to participate is able to do so. Um, and then the last part about this is our core offices will be supporting specifically, and I think we can, um, we can go to the next slide on this one. Um, but our core offices will be focusing and, um, specifically supporting our T S I and A T S I schools. That's what used to be known as priority and focus schools, but some additional intensive work and support for those, um, those schools that need additional help and are looking for additional help and resources. So they will help to develop implementation plans, provide services to help with what that implementation looks like, and make sure that those groups are networked together so that we have a priority school turnaround school network where principals can actually work with one another on best practices. Um, the next slide talks about our pre-K online tool, and so this is going to be two slides worth. So I'll briefly cover, for teachers on this slide, um, it is around extensive videos, tools, guidance, everything you might need to implement high-quality, early learning, early literacy practices in the classroom, and then making sure that our leaders have something similar to support their teachers. This is all done through our Best for All Central, um, website, um, that you can see in the corner. But on the next slide, it gives a little bit more information on what this covers. So there's a materials navigator, provides scope and sequences for some of the materials on the state adoption list. I want to be super clear that we offered this to every single publisher on the state adopted list. It was the publisher's choice whether or not they wanted to be included. Um, so we wanted to make sure to provide as much as we could, um, so that districts had access to that. We also have and developed with Tennessee teachers a foundational skills curriculum supplement. Those are daily lesson plans that pre-K through second grade teachers can use. We've got, um, videos, implementation schedules, professional development, um, resources, all sorts of things available. It does create almost its own set of resources and materials that can be used for those districts who want to supplement different pieces into their current programs. And then we have an at-home reading su- resource series, um, that is specific for districts to use with their, with their teachers, um, and families so that, um, families have access to resources that connect classroom to home. Um, and all of that, again, is available on Best for All Central. And then the last component from the district perspective is assessment, um, everyone's favorite topic. So, um, for assessment, um, we, we will be developing an early grade literacy screener. Um, that, again, is something that overlaps with the literacy bill, but it will need to meet the requirements of R T I two, dyslexia screener, as well as, um, an alternative to portfolio. So that would be a requirement that would have to, have to occur here. But it is a free option for folks to use to cover those things that are most important to learn in early reading. We would also develop a data system that is easy to use and very familiar as it relates to the data systems our districts currently use um, so that districts can monitor progress over time. But again, we'll talk about this in more depth when we talk about the, um, literacy bill. Um, on the next, and I think this is one of the things that makes, um, that's kind of that vertical alignment around this, you know, state, district, and, um, teachers and classrooms. When we think about all of the other stakeholders who are part of reading and literacy work, um, when I looked at other state plans, we, we kind of leave out families, and we know that parents are a child's first teacher, um, and we, we really need to make sure they're meaningfully and thoughtfully engaged. So on the next slide, um, this is the second grant that the department received, twenty million dollar competitive grant for connected literacy micro grants. This provides for thirteen thousand students and their families. It gives them access to grants to have some, to have tutoring. That was going to happen this spring and the summer, frankly, based on the capacity and, and exhaustion of our, of our teachers right now, um, and because we had some additional funding that was passed for summer programming. We will start this in the fall of next year to allow for tutoring throughout next year. Um, what this does is it provides for training for future tutors as well as over thirty-six hours of early literacy tutoring, um, for each student over twelve-week tutoring cycles. This is not, this, so this, um, can do a couple of things. One is, parents and families will choose whoever the provider is that they want to provide tutoring. This is all happening outside of our traditional public school day. Approved providers will be on a list. That can include teachers, that can include schools, that can include our districts, that can include other organizations who may want to apply to be on an approved provider list. The parent chooses the provider, and then they get that twelve-week cycle of tutoring, um, available. They also get access to a permanent device that they can keep as well as the internet. So thirteen thousand kids will have access to, um, home devices that they will keep as well as permanent internet, um, for the duration of the program. Um, so that is the first one. The second thing for families on the next slide, um, is our at-home reading series. We gave away six hundred thousand books to just about fifty-nine thousand, just over fifty-nine thousand families, covering over half of our districts. They each got ten books to build their home libraries, as well as one-pagers for family reading time. And those were things like you read a book and- like you read a book and maybe we tell, you know, stories under, under the covers with a, with a flashlight. So some of the ways you can make reading more engaging and fun at home. It gives activities for parents to do to extend that learning opportunity. We know that reading the books is the most important part, but all of the activities and memories that go around reading the books with your children is actually just as important. And so it was super exciting to hand those out with the board chair and Clifford the Big Red Dog. That was, that was a very memorable moment. Clifford is not wearing a mask, and so I just want to apologize for Clifford in advance. We could not find one for him. On the next slide, we have the at-home reading series, book packs. This is something I'm probably the most excited about. And what this is, is families can order directly online to have a set of decodable sent directly to their home that matches the reading level of their child. These are decodables that the department is building and has built directly with Tennessee teachers. They're super neat, and I wish I would have grabbed one off of my shelf. But they are, you can actually see the teachers and the districts who worked on these. But they're decodables that the family can read. And as they're reading that, and you can, they're, again, a decodable is a book that for the grade level, students should be able to read the words, sound them out, et cetera. It gives tips about things you can do with your child, strategies for how to build fluency, as well as accuracy. And again, those are 10 decodables for each student for every grade. That is no charge to the families. They register online, and then they will have that shipment mailed directly to them. We are also building short videos to go with that. So 90-second to three-minute videos that you can watch helps you understand exactly how, what you need to do for that book. So I can watch that video really quickly and then do that work directly with my child at home. And that should streamline very nicely into the strategies that we're supporting with our teachers and classrooms and districts and implementation networks. So that will be launching very, very soon. And we're very excited and very grateful to the teachers who have helped to build those with us. It's an exciting project. The next thing we're doing for families is the Ready for K app. Tennessee had the largest launch of any state ever on this. We surpassed what we expected, frankly, by a significant margin. So right now, we have 140,000 families. That's not students, that's going to be total families who receive the Ready for K text reminders. It looks like what you see in the corner there. I get them for both of my girls that are in school. And they're just, it's a fact about something you need to know about that grade level, a tip for something you can do at home, and then an area to support literacy and reading growth at home. We have a number of districts who are on a waiting list because they're, they want to be able to register. We did not go directly to families. We went through districts specifically because we wanted to make sure that there was a real understanding that it was going to be supportive for their local needs. But we are working to expand that so that every district can have access. We do expect somewhere in the neighborhood of 175,000 to 200,000 families statewide will eventually be registered in the next month or so, which is incredible, and also shows how much parents want to be a meaningful part of the process. And then on the last slide for families, again, wanted to make sure we had a robust amount of resources for families. This is PBS. I cannot say enough positive things about this partnership. The six PBS stations across the state have partnered with us since the early spring. We've developed 400 lessons, more than 400 at this point. Those are Tennessee teachers delivering lessons with Tennessee standards and materials. Students can log in. We've, it broadened that to science, but it is really matching a lot of the work that you're hearing about here. They've been good partners, and we are going to continue to partner with them. And allows for those students who did not have internet at home to be able to have access to something on their television set to try to create greater equity across the state, depending on wherever that child might live. So we were very, very grateful for this partnership. And then last but not least with reading 360, our community partnerships. And we can go to the next slide. We will be developing a public awareness campaign that will launch when all of the initiatives are actually ready. We're in a procurement process and all sorts of things with a lot of these things. But in the late spring, early summer, we'll have a starting with sounds because the connection between, again, the phonological awareness of how you hear and say sounds and words has actually a very strong connection to music as well. And we hear that in nursery rhymes and such. And so we want to make sure that we're making that connection very explicit and broadening reading to also include music because we know that that actually is, especially with rhyming, has a very strong impact positively on a child's ability to read. On the collaborations with community, we will have a reading research center. We think that the accountability is really important on how well our initiatives are working, how much we are moving the needle across the state. And frankly, and very candidly, this cannot be a, an administration-specific or a department-specific activity. I do think having a, a third-party, research-based organization in one of our exceptional colleges and universities to be able to house that and measure things along the way, allow for sustainability and focus on this work that is bigger than anything else, and it should be, it should be the state of Tennessee. And then over the course of the next three months, we'll be putting on our website a whole bunch of different ways that folks can engage at the local level, at the state level, at the community level, just to make sure that if you are a business and you want to release your employees early once a week to be able to do some tutoring, that's great. If you want to build home libraries and do book drives, that's wonderful. But what are all the ways that different people and groups are able to really embrace reading and provide support to students in their local communities? And then the last is on the timeline. This just gives you a sense of where we are. December and then March through May is about the announcement and the launch, some programming communications. We'll be doing procurements now through May. And then by the end of May, we'll start with that baseline assessment data, and then certainly have everything ready to launch for the summer. That is our goal. And the last slide is just kind of the, the big picture of reading 360. I do want to point out Vice Chair EB's feedback, and I want to acknowledge it. It is not a full circle. And we, we tried very hard. The reading upside down became a little bit difficult. So it is a, it is intended to be a 360 approach to reading, and those are the eight components. Again, wanting to make sure that any stakeholder is able to support a child's ability to read. We do think everybody together is going to be an important part of this initiative. So appreciate that. And I will pause to see if there are any questions about this very, very long $100 million investment that, that we hope with optional and locally-driven support and context will, will move the needle substantially in, in our third-grade reading rate.
I think this is an incredibly thought, well-thought-through, comprehensive approach, multi-levels. It's also the third reading program I've seen since I've been on the board. And, and I think it's much more robust than the other two, but at the end of the day, it got to work. How, how are we going to monitor and measure the productivity, the effectiveness of this program?
That's a great question. So we're going to do two things. I think one is we are going to have this research center. Their responsibility is to do program evaluations, longitudinal research, and then publish the data reports that measure all of the ways that we're measuring reading at the, the universal screener that's going to come to the department, as well as our TCAP performance, and then what happens with those cohorts of students over time. So they will be studying that, and all of that will be publicly available research for that accountability, and I think very frequent progress checks on whether or not it's working. I will say, from an expectations perspective, I don't expect that in the first two years of this, we are going to see the big uptick because it takes time to really think about practice, implementation, and see that, see those results move. I do expect that we'll start to see that exponentially grow in years three through five. At least that's what we're seeing in other similar states. When we look at, at states when they started to see big jumps, it usually took two to three years. Now, from an implementation and how we are managing that at the department, I think that the approach we are taking is slightly different. And that's, again, us looking at what's worked and not worked nationally. I think a lot of this is about, I think, less about the what and more about the how. That we spend a lot of time as a country thinking about what are the things that we need to do, and then making sure we do all of those things. But we haven't been as thoughtful as a country about really looking at implementation and focusing 80% of our effort and, and capacity on how we are actually implementing the what. I think reading 360 is really getting to that implementation focus. We've seen that that has been more effective in other places in a smaller scale. This is really going to be, can you do implementation at a deep level, make that a focus at a statewide scale? We haven't seen that in, in this way before. So part of it is, you know, it is our best, most researched strategy for how we can move the needle, and we will see in the next two to three years.
This is Bob, EB. I mean, I think this could be a game changer. I really do. And kudos to you and the department for putting this fully comprehensive program together. And I like the foundation. It includes teachers, families, districts, and community. It hits everybody. My question is, how do you assure those 13,000 that'll be in the tutoring program, how will they be selected? I mean, what's, the ones that really need it, we'll get it. What's the process for that?
Yeah. So, so good question. What we are going to be doing is the federal, the federal law and grant requirements drive that. It is focused on those students who are currently identified as having a reading deficiency, and there are lots of different ways that we can define that. And then it also prioritizes students who are in low-income communities. Again, from making sure that, that those are the two groups that are more likely to need additional support. And so those will be prioritized. We are going to allow for it statewide. There was a recommendation to just pick a couple of concrete areas, but we didn't think that that was fair or equitable for the state. So it will be open and available across the state, but it will focus on those two groups. The department has also heard a lot of feedback from families about wanting to have additional opportunities. So when you, when we are looking at our SR dollars as a department for SR 2.0, and that is going through the Fiscal Accountability Work Group this week, we do want to put a pretty significant amount of our dollars towards matching grants for tutoring programs so that if there are additional families who want that kind of tutoring, they will still have access and opportunity if their district might not be offering it.
A question on Governor's Books from Birth, which really starts, you know, at child, at, at early childhood and starts sending books out. And I know, I think, one of my granddaughters, that's one of the events of the month for hers to get her book. Are we having any conversation with them about, not necessarily coordination, but just so that we're communicating in, in, in some way with that? That is Governor Lee's program, and Dolly Parton's involved, and they put out a, you know, 60 million books in Tennessee or whatever it is. So I'm just curious about that. And then, secondly, the timeline that you gave a minute ago is probably sufficient for, for, for my level of understanding. So that was very helpful. I, I would also just, you know, like to know what you think the friction is in this. In other words, is it at the teacher level? Is it at the district level? Is it everywhere and not anywhere? Just sort of a sense of the, the friction that you think you're looking at?
Yeah, two, two good questions. So I think, so the first is the Books to Birth, they've rebranded into the Governor's Early Literacy Foundation. And so they've been the primary point of contact on the at-home library work that you saw with the book giveaway, Clifford the Big Red Dog, that slide. They are also are the primary point of contact for Ready for K. So they've taken a big role on the, on the family side. So it's been a great partnership.
Good.
Yeah, of course. On the, on the friction side, I think, I, I will say, anything with education is going to have friction. So that is, that is the, that is our field. What we've tried to do in this program is make it totally optional. And that ensures that we've kind of backed off at the, the pressure point for districts. They can pick and choose across this entire catalog what makes sense for them right now, what works for them, what they might want to do a little bit later, and at what level. So even if they want to do implementation networks or participate in the teacher PD programs, they don't have to necessarily have all of their teachers do it. It is kind of a, intended to be a mix and match for them. I will say, we have offered it up so that, let's say, you have District ABC who opts out of the two-week professional development for teachers. Teachers are still able to opt in individually. We thought that might be a friction point. We wanted to allow for flexibility. I think that most of that's going to be on a timing perspective, especially as districts have a lot to do. They are tired. So one of the things we're now going back and doing is making sure that some of the things that districts just might not have the capacity to do this summer, that we will cycle that back over the next couple of summers to allow for flexibility to remove that particular friction point if they want to opt in and just can't do it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on reading 360 before we get to special session? It's a lot, y'all. I just, I want to acknowledge that we just talked about two really, really big things. And we are two-thirds of the way, but it is, I just want to acknowledge that our districts are also feeling that there is a lot happening in education in this country and certainly in the state. But want to make sure I provide enough time for this $100 million investment in, in reading.
Penny, this is there. I think you'll get to this, but my only question is sort of how some of this relates and kind of underscores the things that were passed in that literacy bill. So I know you're going to get to that, but just to put that out there.
Great. Okay. We will go on to special session. This is, this is also good. You, you all are testing my ability to answer questions in the moment on a lot of different topics. I appreciate that. For special session, and we can go to the next slide. As you all well know, Governor Lee called a special session for education specifically to address the challenges that are currently faced related to the pandemic and COVID-19, but also what we expect might be legacy challenges that we can be more proactive in addressing in the years to come. So in the first, the first one I, I want to tackle, and this is, I think, the one that is frankly, the, the biggest one in terms of complexity is learning loss. And it is the Learning Loss and Student Acceleration Bill. So on the next slide, in terms of why does this matter? I want to be very clear that, and many of you have been in classrooms as well, districts need additional support in terms of resources, but folks are working harder than they have worked ever before. And you see that and you feel that when you are in the buildings. I've been in just about 45 to 47 districts last semester, and, and no matter where you are in the state, you are feeling that. We also know that everyone had different opportunities in the spring. We had some districts that were one-to-one already, and they could do synchronous and asynchronous learning. There were lots of things, infrastructure they had in place. We had some districts that couldn't do that. And so they were able to give packets when able. So you have students who had daily instruction, much more regular instruction than you have students that the infrastructure wasn't there, they didn't have internet at home, et cetera. And so that led to different opportunities. We also know that coming into the fall, lots of students are in very different instructional models, and there's 10 different ways you can slice that. And so regardless of what that instructional model is, we also know disruptions like quarantine time, repeated quarantines, et cetera, those all impact that consistency and stability in terms of educational opportunities. And that is no one's fault except a very, very chaotic pandemic that, in, in terms of what disruptions that's meant for schools and classrooms. And so knowing that that impacts our learners, we have seen and heard from districts in Tennessee and across the country, those most impacted are children with disabilities, children who speak a language other than English, children who were not already on grade level, and our youngest learners who have struggled more with that, with that kind of lack of consistency and stability that sometimes happens with frequent disruptions due to quarantine or different learning environment. So one of the solutions, going to the next slide, to both address what that, what those disruptions have led to, as well as ways to accelerate students who have done just fine. Because we've got a lot of students across the state who have not experienced the level of disruption and who are accelerating and growing as much, if not more, than they otherwise would have. There are some intervening components to, to address this. So the first is related to summer programming. So that, and I'm going to break this down because the bill is very long and complicated, but for this summer and for next summer, the bill funds and provides for six weeks of elementary school camps, four weeks of middle school camps, and then an after-school stream programming for an hour for the elementary camp. That's for the next two summers. That includes waiver processes. Every district is different, and we want to make sure that they can execute on the flexibilities that they may need to develop programs and craft programs that make the most sense for them at the local level. Starting in summer of 2023, so two years from now, there will be four weeks of permanent summer programming for rising fourth through eighth graders. That is to address those students as they are moving out of that critical third grade year who have additional support. And it's to address Summer Slide, something that we think can be a legacy project coming out of the pandemic. We talk about Summer Slide a lot, and we've been talking about it for years. This allows us to really address that for those critical grades. It also establishes the Tennessee Accelerating Literacy and Learning Core, which we're calling the All Core. And that requires the department to develop a set of tutor training and certification programming, plus lessons and supports for tutors to use throughout the school year. And that covers grades K through 12. So it's a pretty expensive amount of programming that the department is required to develop. The districts can optionally use in their tutoring programs. For the summer programming, it requires four hours of some combination of English Language Arts and Math. It does not prescribe the format, the materials, or anything. So there's lots of, I think, ways that can be fun and engaging and outdoors if at all possible for a lot of students. It requires an hour of RTI 2 and an hour of play. I will, and I have been very transparent that that, that is something I felt very strongly about. It is summer, and while we can do lots of play-based activities in ELA and Math as well, we need to make sure there's at least one hour that is only about play and activity. And then the stream programming, it was STEM, then it was STEAM, now it's streamed. And that's to ensure that there's after-school programming. The feedback we received from families was that they have, they traditionally have after-school programming in regular school days during the year, and that helps meet the needs of their work schedules. So the additional time supports families. It was also intended because we've seen a little bit of concern about a dip in science in particular. So this allows for some additional kind of hands-on, project-based, fun science work that can happen in this after-school programming. On the next slide is the second part of, of the bill.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. But that's the previous slide. One of the things that...
One of the things that, that I'm hearing a lot about from the superintendents, and I'm sure other members are hearing this, saying their, their biggest concern, and I know you hear it too, the summer concept, which I think is important to do, is the teachers. They're talking about the exhaustion level of teachers today and concern that they'll struggle with getting enough teachers who are interested, even with, I believe you said there's a stipend that goes along with this opportunity. So have, have you all had a lot of discussions with superintendents and coming up with any solutions? I think I've heard a few concepts, but would you mind just covering a, a little bit of that with us?
Absolutely. And so, and, and, and yes, we are hearing the same thing. I would say that in terms of conversations right now, the bills are just passed, we're starting to get that feedback i- in, in terms of implementation components of this. And so I think what we heard is it was really important, at least on the front end, really important for them to get resources and support to fund summer programming. Now, as we expect, you know, you, you get funding, but there's always going to be kind of strings with that. Now that we have what those strings are in terms of requirements, what are the flexibilities? And certainly, how do we address exhaustion and teacher fatigue? So what is written into the bill is that for those critical areas of Math and Science, you have, or I'm sorry, Math and ELA, you have a certified or credential teacher. If you cannot identify one, or you do not have one available, it does allow for a lot of options and flexibilities. Those who are in ed prep programs, those who might have a college degree, but, and can go through a program to become certified in the tutoring space, et cetera. It also allows for folks to split summers, so you don't need to have one teacher for the entire summer. You could have teachers who go for two, two, and two, teachers who split the summer in half, et cetera, which allows for flexibility. And then we are also exploring flexibility in terms of the total number of weeks, especially because grade bands overlap between schools. So you might, we might have districts who say, look, we can do a four-week, but we just cannot staff for a six-week. Then how can we make adjustments through the waiver process and allow for flexibility in that space? So those are all some of the, the things that we are working on to make sure that districts can craft programming that meets the needs of their local context.
Thank you.
Yes. So I will, I will go to the next component, which is the second part of the bill, and that is the component related to 2023. So in two and a half years, what does that mean for third graders who are not yet at MEETS, which is on track, or masters on the third-grade English Language Arts component of the TCAP? So I would say, you know, taking a step way back, I think that the, the most important part of this particular part of the bill is about funding and support for children who have not yet gotten or moved as far along as we would like in this critical content area. And so what this does is it provides multiple pathways for students who are approaching or below on the third-grade ELA TCAP. So for those students who are at approaching, and that is a significant number of students, I do not want to under, I, I don't think I can underscore enough that when we are talking about approaching, it's about 40% of our total enrollment in third grade. Those are students who have, I think, the biggest range, so at the top of the approaching level, likely don't need as much support as those that are at the bottom of that approaching level. But if they are not yet at, on track or masters by the end of third grade on the TCAP for ELA, they have four different pathways they can choose, and that's families and schools working together. They can either retake the assessment, we would develop a very short-form assessment, and those are for students maybe get, they get those extra couple of weeks right after the test. They then can retake a short-form version, show that they are at that on-track or masters and move on. They can participate in that four weeks of summer programming that is now permanently offered. They can receive a full year of tutoring for the entirety of fourth grade, or they can be retained. Those decisions are 100% made at the local level. So if the local level does not want to retain any children, they do not have to retain a single child. Those are the conversations that need to happen between families and schools. What this does is it provides resources and supports for additional supports for kids that otherwise have not been resourced in the past. If a child is at below, they have fewer options. So the first option is they can retake a short-form assessment, or they can go, participate in summer school and a year of tutoring in fourth grade, or the third pathway is they can, they can be retained. Again, those decisions need to happen at the local level between families and schools to determine which of those three pathways a child should be on. Overall, though, I think the big takeaway is there's a significant amount of funding and resources that are being made available to provide students who aren't quite there with more opportunities to get additional support that they otherwise wouldn't. I would expect that some districts will explore retention. I think there are a number of districts who that will not be one of the pathways they explore. And again, that will be something that will happen at the local level. There's also a commission or waiver authority there for those students who are at the highest level of approaching, and, and these pathways are either unnecessary or not best suited. And you can think of a lot of, a lot of conditions for that. Related to students who maybe are proficient in content but have significant dyslexia, or students who maybe have some additional mental health components. We've, I've had a number of conversations with superintendents where it is the format of the test, you can actually see other ways that the child is demonstrating mastery. So I think we want to be able to explore all of those conditions that are really specific to the needs of individual students. But that is the second part of the, the bill that is, that is a relatively robust addition.
If the district decides that they're not going to retain, and, and the student has a tutor for the entirety of fourth grade, and at the end of the fourth grade, they're not on grade level, what happens then?
So the bill is silent on that. The bill just says that the student must demonstrate adequate growth. Adequate is to be defined by the department over the next two years, but if they don't meet adequate growth, they're, the bill is silent on what then happens.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, Mike, again. Probably the thing that has driven me crazy the most is watching kids graduate from high school without the reading skills to go to the next level. And then we've got to work backwards, and, and we're, you know, third grade is really ground zero for all this to happen, and as you, as you said. One of the things that I think needs to happen with all the options that districts have, but if they're, if they can move people, decision-makers on their students can move people through a system. At some point, we're not, we're going to have to say if a high school diploma in reading is, is not required. If you can't read, are we going to give a kid a diploma? And if we're not, does it get more serious when we start backing up and like third grade? Well, one of the questions that I had was if, if one of the options is go to summer school, if at the end of summer school, are they given an assessment? And if they're not adequately performing on that assessment, what happens then? It's sort of like we're doing checkoff lists that may end up with that kid walking across the stage at the end of his senior year and not being able to read.
I, I, I agree. I, I think that one of the things that I'm hopeful about this is that, you know, these additional resources and supports, we know they need to happen in the youngest grades. One of the things that we were required to do, to provide to the, the House side during session was to track cohorts of students over time to be able to see what does happen to them in terms of their performance on TCAP, on ACT, and post-secondary. And I think that we are seeing some trends. I'm hopeful that, that we are going, that these interventions earlier are going to make a big difference, but I think it, it doesn't speak certainly to what happens after fourth grade. I do think summer programming will be available. So if they don't make enough growth, we'll have the pre and post-test in the summer to inform the work that happens the next year. If that child is not on grade level, I think to Vice Chair Eby's point, at the end of fourth grade, they, they don't have a requirement, they, we will still have that summer programming available all the way through A to try to see if we can, we can catch them up. Other questions on learning loss and student acceleration before we move to accountability? Okay, we will go to accountability. So on the next slide, as, as you, you all know, this is, this is a lot of your bread and butter, so it's the, we identify state standards, we cert, you all certainly approve the instructional materials to teach those standards, we assess on those standards, and then we hold accountable on those standards. Those are kind of the four big roles of any, of any state as it relates to education, and that is squarely within the State Board. And so when we think about accountability and what that means for this year, we know that it has been central, and has been central for a lot of the progress that has happened over the last 12-plus years. We also know that a lot of that information comes from student assessment, but the way that we use those assessments is critical to make sure that it is appropriate for what needs to happen any given year. And given a pandemic, this is not a normal year, it is an extraordinary year, and so we wanted to think about what is ambitious, feasible, but most importantly, appropriate as it relates to accountability. So on the next slide, what you will see is what we're calling kind of just the accountability to inform. So there are two parts to this. I'm going to talk about the teacher component first. On the educator or teacher side, it is a straight hold harmless. It does allow for teachers to make decisions about what version of evaluation they want and choose. We had a number of teachers who said they wanted the option to have the more traditional evaluation structure, they needed it for tenure licensure, they felt really strongly that they were, they, if they had a great score, they wanted to be able to use that. The department has put up a significant amount of resources and will continue to do that on our website, DRIPS, that is outlined specifically for special session, and it shows all the different options that teachers can take. But it is a hold harmless. It is also hold harmless on using this data for the next three years. I want to make sure I acknowledge P E T E A and the School Boards Association, they were very, very strong in their communication on that to ensure that this data can be used over three years for teacher evaluation. The second half of the bill is about district and school accountability. Now, the district and school accountability is hold harmless with a condition. That condition does not live on the teacher's side. It does require that districts have 80% of their enrolled students participate in the TCAP, and it is 80% of students participate in the TCAP. What, what that requires is that districts do have students who participate. If they meet that bar, then they are held harmless on the negative consequences with accountability. So those would be letter grades or, or labels. It is about being put into the ASC or any of the priority school turnaround work that exists, et cetera. It allows for positive consequences, so you can still be a reward school, you can still have priority school exit, all of those benefits still exist. From a participation rate perspective, what we saw in the fall before, before this bill was public, or, or this part of the bill, frankly, there wasn't a participation rate included, what we saw was that 83% of our districts already hit that 80% or higher mark. We saw over 90% of our districts hit a mark that was close to 80%. And again, those were with, those were across subject areas, et cetera. We are seeing a very strong participation rate statewide. Over the spring, what the department has done to allow for greater flexibility is we've extended the testing window from, by five and a half weeks, so now we have over nine-week testing window, so lots of flexibility. Districts can test anytime within that window to allow for spacing of students to accommodate quarantine, if that is still, if that is still occurring, I'm, I'm trying to remain very optimistic about that, but certainly to have a lot of flexibility for students and for testing. That level of flexibility, we certainly had more flexibility in the fall, we did not have nine-plus weeks of testing flexibility. So we are doing that, we are also looking at rotations. Districts can pick lots of different windows, and we have worked with our vendor to ensure that they get their raw scores back within two weeks. We have a calendar for that return, and Pearson is committed to that. So lots of good flexibility and movement for the spring to help districts meet this 80% mark. There is also a waiver process here for those districts who, they are, we have very, very tiny districts, as you know, who might not meet the cut by a couple of students. There might be major events that happen, but there are going to be things that might require flexibility. The legislature was quite clear about the boundaries that they wanted to place on that, but we certainly want to make sure that we are accommodating those, those very unique situations. I will pause here to see if there are questions on accountability.
Is the purpose of holding that number at 80% so that we're assured that we've got a good cohort of results to know exactly where the students are? Is that the purpose?
Yes, it, it is. And so because, and I did, I forgot to say this, so thank you for reminding me, the data is public, so that was something that I think was a really strong point of the bill that, that we heard a lot about in the committee hearings, at least I, I heard from, from the committee members. Everything will be published and transparent as it always is, it's the labels and the consequences that are removed. 80% does give us a very, very good amount of information to be able to see what those patterns are, and it allows us to look at trends, and so we feel like that sample size is significant and quite robust. This data is also used in year, in far-out years, and so that was something that we did not hear as feedback, or at least, and I say we, but the General Assembly did not hear in, in the same ways from the teacher perspective. So wanting to make sure that we got enough students to participate to be able to actually know what those trends would be and feel good about it. It also ensures that districts are participating in assessment, and as I, and as I said, all the ones who participated virtually over the fall, we saw that virtually all of them had very, very high participation rates even before this bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to literacy. Everyone knows this is my favorite topic, I just spent like 45 minutes talking about it before, so we're going to talk about it again. Good day. So for literacy, it's the Building Better Readers with Phonics. There are four key bucket areas for this particular bill. The first is ensuring that every LEA and public charter school uses foundational literacy skills, that's a phonics-based approach, to develop strong readers in schools. I, I've never seen a program that doesn't use phonics, but this is ensuring that they are leading with as a foundational component of their literacy instruction, a phonics-driven approach. The second part of that, and I should say that that also includes instructional materials, right now there is an adopt, this is an adopt and use instructional material specifically rooted in, in foundational literacy skills. The second part of the bill is around a foundational literacy skills plan. This allows for significantly more local control than what we might have seen in the bill in the last spring, and it does say that with that significant local control, there is a responsibility and requirement to publicize that information in a, in a public way. So districts are able to say, here is what we are doing for literacy, and the bill outlines a number of requirements and components, professional development, staffing, instructional materials, times that, or at least amount of minutes per day that you are using in literacy, et cetera. That will all be publicly available. I think to, to remember Edwards's earlier question, this also allows for our research center to be able to really track what are trends for districts that are seeing a lot of growth? Are we seeing that they are having similar plans, similar strategies that they're using, et cetera? So it's a really important piece of information. The third part of the bill is around a universal screener. So there is a state-provided or approved reading screeners. That's two pathways. So the state will be providing a free option available to any district who wants to use it, that is an option. Districts can also continue to use whatever screeners they want at the local level, and that would be through an adopted process. That would come to you all from a State Board perspective to be able to say this, this does or does not meet the requirement. In the bill, it does have to meet the dyslexia screening requirement, RTI 2 screener, and then be an approved alternative to portfolio. So that way, we are, if those right now in some districts are different assessments, it consolidates to reduce total assessment time and increase instructional and, and learning time. The, the requirements is that they have to submit in the same way they do for RTI 2. Now, it's in the fall, winter, and spring, they are already doing that as part of the RTI 2 requirement, so it matches that same submission cycle, so it is not, it is consistent with the, the current processes. And then the last part or fourth part of the bill is around educator prep, and so it does require that EPPs provide training on foundational literacy skills in their educator prep programs, and that will be consistent with any of the standards that you may or may not change to be aligned to this phonics-driven approach that's outlined in the bill. But EPPs would then have to do that, and that starts in the 20, and Sarah, you're going to tell me if I, if I'm wrong here, but the 2022 school year, so it does give all of next year for some piloting, et cetera, and then they would introduce those standards the following year. So it is still a very quick turnaround for, I think, how things normally are implemented, but it does allow for a full year of piloting, et cetera, for potential, potential courses and content. And then the, the second part of that with EPPs or future teachers is it does require our K through 3 teachers to pass a reading instruction assessment. That should be at no cost to either the EPP or the teacher. What we have seen is that it likely makes the most sense as an addition or supplement to the additional battery of, of assessments that teachers currently take. There are a number of those that are available now through existing providers, other states have free options. That will be an ongoing conversation that we will have with you all in terms of how you would like us to move forward in that selection and adoption process, but it cannot come at a cost to the teacher or the ed prep. So that is the literacy, and happy to answer questions.
I have a question regarding the foundational literacy skills plan. Is that going to be, is approval required for those plans? And if so, is there a rubric or a document, a template that the department will provide to the LEAs and charter schools?
Yeah, great, great question. So, um, yes, the plans are due on June 1st of this year. They are then required to resubmit every three years after that, unless they are high-growth, high-performing, in which case they can submit on a longer interval, or they are not seeing growth and development for their all students or their smaller students. Or they are not seeing growth in development for their all students or their smaller student groups, in which case they will need to make revisions on a more regular basis until they have a plan that's leading to adequate growth. Those are due June 1st. We are setting up a separate group of superintendents and teachers who will help to co-construct the template for that. We want to have that out no later than mid-March, so folks can know. We will also be providing an exemplar that we will have developed with teachers and districts to say this is a model and a couple of models that you might be able to use if districts want reference.
Right. And I think it was Bob Eevee that asked the question about the EPPs and if the EPPs were working together to develop, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong. So this particular, the second to the last bullet speaks to the training which would be incorporated into their current course structure or however they determine best to make that happen. And so I don't know that there's any component of this that speaks to the interface with the districts that they support. And of course, we know that many EPPs are covering the entire state, the drawing from, the LEAs are drawing from all EPPs. But I'm just, in terms of that partnership and ensuring the connection between the two so that they're in lockstep, if you will, and there's no missteps. Because in conversations with superintendents, I often hear them say, but we're not getting students graduating prepared in X, Y, Z, or whatever, one, two, three. And so it's always the question I pose back to them, well, what are you doing to inform them? And what are you doing to come together to solve that equation? So I'm asking it for that reason, but also it really, that partnership to me would be so critically important. Any component included in that?
So I think, so I'll say the short answer is no, not explicitly. But I think it's a really good point in terms of making the more explicit connection between especially the materials. Because EPPs are now going to have kind of materials that they will need to support in terms of how to implement high-quality instructional materials. We are talking with folks around which districts do you provide the most teachers to? Is there a way to build those connections? And then frankly, one of the things that I heard directly from an EPP is can the department help to facilitate the EPP having access to the instructional materials that are used in districts? So they can actually teach using the things that their teachers will eventually need. So I think those are the types of informal connections that absolutely need to be made. But it is not formally put into this bill. I think it is incredibly important work.
I do too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Penny, this is Sarah. Just quick questions. You know, this is going to keep all of us really busy over the next few months, which is exciting. I mean, truly it is. But it is going to be a lot to kind of manage. Can you talk a little bit more about some of the work on the state provided assessment? And then these other kind of more locally adopted screeners? And then also sort of how you imagine that rolling out for purposes of the portfolio, you know, an alternative to the portfolio? I mean, it's going to be a low-stakes assessment, so to speak, but it's just pre-test, post-test. You know, how are we going to manage through some of those multiple assessments being used here?
Yep, great question. So there will be two simultaneous streams of work. So one will be from the state board perspective, identifying what that state adopted or state-approved list of screeners would be. I think that that's something the department and the state board will be working closely together around what does the submission and review process look like, recommendations of referrals, and then would need to go to a vote. That would then be what the districts can select off of. We expect that all the ones that come in are the ones that the districts are currently using, so it'll be what that review process is. At the same time, the department will shortly be putting out a procurement. And that will be for kind of developing and/or purchasing a universal screener that will be made freely available to districts. That will take the next four to five months to be able to go fully through. Both of those would be used starting next year. And then the data requirements would be the same. Districts would still have to submit in the fall, winter, and spring to align with that same RTI pattern so they can use that as a replacement for RTI to eventually reduce, I think, total assessment minutes.
And then in terms of the growth measure, Pika, that'll make sense. That's helpful to clarify. You would have teachers administering at the beginning of the year, end of the year. And then we'd have to, at the state level, determine across each of those assessments or what constitutes various levels of growth, you know what I mean? Like that work would also have to take place, it sounds like.
Yep. So the department will have to, will determine adequate growth as well as cut points for each of those assessments. So for any assessment that you all have on the state adopted list, plus the free universal screener, we will say here is what that cut point is for each of those, so to make sure that it's the same level of rigor across the board. And then for each of the three submission windows, we'll be able to say whether or not the child's on progress for adequate growth. That will lead to, which is in the literacy bill, the requirement to provide parents with transparent reporting about their child's progress for reading, as well as additional suggestions, references, and resources for the child to be helped at home. The parents will get that reporting requirement, and that will be based off of those cut points that are established over the next six months or so.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. That's helpful.
It is a lot of work, though.
It's just a lot of moving parts. I mean, we're going to have all kinds of spreadsheets, I think, just trying to keep track of what needs to happen when. So I know you do too.
I had great aspirations for sleep one day, but I don't think 2020 is going to be that year. So I'll just wait till Monday.
Just more coffee.
I can go to teacher pay. I know from a time perspective and then as questions are coming up. But want to make sure it covers teacher pay. There's a lot of conversation about it. So we all know teacher pay matters, and we've got to continue to push aggressively forward here. I want to, first want to define this, whenever you see a percent, and I know you all know this, but I'm going to say it for the record. It is the percent increase to the instructional component of the BEP. It does not necessarily cover every single teacher or applicable staff member because most of our districts put, or at least hire folks above and beyond the BEP. So it is a $43 million set fund over the next six months. So I will talk about why it's important. Teachers are working very, very hard. We know that we want to continue to be aggressive about teacher salary increases, bonuses, all of the things. There was, the governor had proposed a four percent increase to the BEP. Last year, COVID happened. I'm very excited that we're seeing movement this year. And it is very well-deserved by our very hard-working, not just educators, but the folks who are driving the buses and passing out the lunches and all of the things that have happened over the course of the last 10 months. On the next slide, you will see kind of what this means and how this works. So for the next six months, that's January 1 through June 30th, the legislative package that was passed allows for a $43 million increase for instructional salary. It's intended to be for instructional salaries or bonuses. That's $43 million. That is the equivalent of a two percent increase to the instructional component of the BEP. That $43 million covers the state portion as well as the local match. That locals do not have to contribute over the next six months. That is why it is done as a one-time, so that we can pay for the local matches with states. That $43 million pot will be divided to LEAs in alignment with the BEP formula. And districts will be able to determine how to allocate that at a local level. They may choose to do bonuses. They may choose to do salary increases. They may choose to do any version of that. And that can cover any employee who is also covered in that part of the BEP. And that is a pretty wide net of folks. So that's going to look different for every district. The amount that every educator gets is going to look different. It's going to depend on who the district employs, how many people over the BEP, et cetera. So we really are trying to talk about it in terms of the amount of dollars and not the percent. It's $43 million over the next six months. The governor is also publicly committed to increasing the instructional component of the BEP in a recurring format. That would be July 1. That is, that would be in a proposed budget. That would still need to be passed in the general session by the general assembly. But that would be a significant portion of funds that would be forevermore. It's $120 million additional funding that would go towards this instructional component of the BEP in a recurring space. And that is the equivalent of a four percent increase to the pot. Again, that is going to be different than the percent that each individual teacher sees. That will vary across districts in terms of how locals determine how they want to allocate that. But it is $120 million that is being proposed starting July 1. That would be recurring. So that is the last slide. So I want to be able to, if there are any questions about this, teacher pay or anything else in this deck, or frankly, anything related to education, I'm happy to answer.
I did want to go back on one. So first let me say thank you for this. I mean, this is really a great presentation, covered a lot of things. Back on accountability, there is one aspect of accountability that has to do with the federal government would require a waiver. And I know we were going to request a waiver. Where does that process stand? And how likely are we, you know, to get that waiver on accountability for the federal?
Yep, great question. So we posted the waiver for public comment the next business day after the bill passed. We have the seven days. We essentially just matched the waiver language to the bill. So we didn't include anything else. We said, if this is what the general assembly passes, that's what we need to ask for. And so we did seven days of public comment and then submitted essentially a cover letter in the template and the language of the bill. That has been submitted to the U.S. Department of Education. They have not indicated when they will get back to us. They had this kind of emergency, urgent rush timeline where if you submitted by February 1st, they were going to prioritize those. So we got it in by February 1st. That was on Monday. They've now adjusted their timeline. So I'm not sure when we'll hear back. I am very optimistic that they are going to provide for the flexibility that we're asking for. I feel that way based on what the transition team said, certainly in the testimony that we heard in the hearings yesterday for the proposed Secretary Cardo. I think all of those, I feel confident that we will have a positive response to that waiver. I think they're trying to see what all the waivers across the country are looking like. Ours is not. I think ours is in line with what they would be comfortable approving. At least that's the early indications I've received.
Thank you.
What I want to move into right now is certainly to say thank you to Commissioner Schwinn. Couple of us had an early preview of Reading 360 and were incredibly excited about the opportunity. And based on this program as well as with the new legislation, I think the timing is just absolutely spot-on and perfect for the state board to launch a new subcommittee focused on literacy. And I'm pleased to announce that we are moving forward with that particular committee. And we have already received indication from three of our board members of their willingness to serve on the committee. And that is Mr. Nick, yeah, Nick Darnell. I know a David Darnell, and I always want to call Nick David. Mr. Gordon? Gordon?
Nate Morrow.
It's Nate. It's not Nick. Nick needs to be a part of it.
I've asked Nick to be an official, but it's officially Nate.
No, no pressure. I apologize. So it's Nate Morrow, Gordon Ferguson, and Elisa Kim. We certainly welcome other board members who can come to the meetings or become an official member of the subcommittee. But we're excited to get that launched. And as I said, I think the timing is just absolutely perfect. It allows us to bring the right people together, working with the department as well as our own staff to ensure that we're looking at all the components of the Reading 360 program as well as doing our part with the legislation. So I'm excited to announce that we're doing that. And thank you, Commissioner Schwinn. We appreciate you being here. That was a lot of talking, a lot of presenting, and great information. So we appreciate it very much. We are going to take a short break unless somebody has another question before you leave us. Mr. Edwards, were you shaking, holding up your hand for a question or a comment? No, no, waving goodbye? Anyone else? We'll take a 10-minute break and we'll come back, well, we'll just take a couple of extra minutes. We'll come back at 1:55. Thank you all. It is time to get started again. And I'm not sure that we have everyone back. Let's just check for a moment. Sarah and Ally, I think we're going to give it a minute because I see we're missing a couple of people.
Sounds good.
I think we can go ahead and get started. And Ally, I think you're going to kick us off. We have several charter school items. And I know Dr. Morrison, you have part of this presentation as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Ally.
Good afternoon. My name is Ally Gaffey, and I'm the interim Director of Charter Schools for the State Board. I have the privilege to provide you with three charter school presentations today, beginning with an update on our authorized charter schools. So as part of state law requirements for all authorizers and in alignment with our quality charter authorizing standard, the charter team produces our annual report on our charter schools' performance. The report is shared with our schools and publicly posted on the State Board's website. There we go. The Board currently has three open and operating charter schools. Bluff City High School, which is in Memphis, serves 560 students across grades nine through 12. Kip Antioch College Prep Elementary in Nashville with 415 students in grades A through two. And Kip Antioch College Prep Middle in Nashville with 270 students in grades five and six. From an enrollment perspective, all three of our schools are meeting their enrollment targets outlined in our charter agreement. And in November 2019, you voted to approve the New Start application for Rocketship Nashville Number Three, which was set to open in August of 2021. However, given the many challenges presented from the pandemic, Rocketship has opted to delay a year and will open in August 2022 under the public charter school commission. Also, at our September special call meeting, you voted to approve the New Start applications for four schools. Portzone Prep, Kip Antioch College Prep High School, Memphis School of Excellence Cordova, and Nashville College Prep. Given that each of these schools will open in a district with at least one priority school, your vote to approve came with a 30-day reconciliation period between a local district and the school. So during this period, Shelby County Schools and the sponsors of Memphis School of Excellence mutually agreed to open as part of Shelby County, and therefore this will not be under the authorization of either the State Board or the Commission. The remaining three schools are set to open in the school year stated in their application and will all open under the Commission. The State Board's current schools will also formally transition to the authorization of the Commission as well on July 1st of this year. The charter team annually evaluates each of its schools using our performance framework, which encompasses a school's academic, financial, and organizational performance. The report I'm discussing today shares the results of the 2019-20 school year for all three of the State Board schools. And I'll start with academic performance. I'm hitting the Zoom button. Apologies. There we go. So in the 1920 school year, school closures and the suspension of statewide testing caused by COVID-19 impacted the State Board staff's ability to collect all necessary academic data. As a result, our schools did not receive accountability ratings and several academic performance measures or an overall indicator score for this section of the evaluation. So while the academic section overall is not applicable for 1920, because there's no data to report for most of the indicators, the report does include four accountability ratings, which I have highlighted here in yellow, based on available data through March 2nd, 2020. And this is shared for information purposes only. This slide shows Bluff City's informal results for these four academic indicators that we had available. So Bluff saw an increase in chronic absenteeism by 4.8% from last year, though it's important to keep in mind that this is not a full picture of their efforts, given that this data only runs through March 2nd rather than the end of May. As a comparison, Shelby County's chronic absenteeism percentage was 25.1% for grades nine through 12. So this ultimately had them scoring as a fall far below. Conversely, they saw more positive changes in their out-of-school suspension rate, their student attrition rate, and teacher retention rate. So we're really proud of the strides that Bluff was making here and believe that their increased efforts set a foundation for the difficult year that they are facing now. In terms of our elementary school, their informal results are here. They saw an increase in their chronic absenteeism by 2.6% from last year, which is to be expected given their growing student population. This is still a strength for the school, though, and has earned them and exceeds standard rating. And as a point of comparison, Metro Nashville's chronic absenteeism percentage was 11.6 for grades K through eight. Equally impressive, the elementary school reduced their out-of-school suspension rate compared to last year as well as its student attrition rate. They also saw more teachers staying with them, though given the school's low teacher count, having a few teachers not return is what fuels this metric. And for our middle school, their informal results are here. In 1920, this was their first year in operation, and their results are especially impressive. They served a class of fifth-grade students in that first year and had 3.3% chronically absent, and only 4.6 of their students serve in out-of-school suspension. Additionally, the school's student attrition and teacher retention rates were very strong, and all four of these informal indicators show that the school is on track to exceed the standard in each area. As there were no overall ratings for the academic performance framework, we'll move into financial. And as I show you the next slide, you'll notice that these scores are not yet finalized. And that's because we have recently received the school's financial audit and are in the process of analyzing it against our framework with the help of our financial consultant. And once these scores are finalized, we'll update the annual report and the Board with the results. So currently, all three schools have met the standard on the enrollment variance indicator as you see here, and the rest of these final scores will be added this spring. In terms of the organizational framework, it's a bit of a catch-all area where we're looking for clients and fidelity to the charter agreement as well as the school's responsibilities under state and federal law. So these indicators are reviewed as part of our ongoing monitoring of a school, though through our monthly calendar, through monthly check-in calls with school-based personnel who are supporting special populations, and data gathered during our annual site visits. So again, you'll see a few indicators that are pending, and this is because some of them come from the audit and will be updated along with the financial framework ratings this spring. And here are the remainder of the indicators for the organizational performance across our three schools. Our annual report is currently on our website and has been shared with our schools. And in terms of next steps, we will finalize the report with those financial performance ratings later this spring and implement any intervention if necessary for any performance deficiencies. Additionally, our team will be virtually conducting our annual site visits throughout this month and the beginning of March for the 2020-21 reporting, and will support the Commission in preparing to host the annual end-of-year performance meetings with our school that occur this summer since they will be transferring over to the Commission. So that is the end of this presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Hallie, I have a question relative to the current interaction that you are having with the Commission, and particularly related to this update and the site visits to the schools, if they will be involved in any of that as observers, if you will. So.
Yeah.
And I know Tess is, of course, highly engaged, but I'm just thinking about the Commission itself. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. Actually, so Tess is equally sharing this presentation with her Commission members today. And we have monthly meetings with the staff just to kind of check in on some transition pieces and things that we're working on together. They have also been invited to all of the site visit activities that we're doing as well as debrief conversations. So however their schedule permits, they will be joining us, but certainly be part of the debrief conversations and wrap-ups so that they see how our schools have performed.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hallie, you may not have the answer to this, but it might be helpful to know basically how these scores are comparing to schools within the same regions, you know, from a comparison standpoint. And why is it that Bluff City or that Kip are so much higher than Bluff City? What is it that Kip is doing right? Were you looking at things like that?
Absolutely. We haven't done comparisons across Metro Nashville and Shelby County charter schools, but certainly can work with the department to pull that because this report that I'm presenting, all authorizers are completing, so we can look across those. And we do like to provide opportunities for our schools to collaborate, particularly through, you know, through our site visits. When we see areas of gaps, we might suggest to them that another one of our schools is succeeding in this or vice versa, and offer them an opportunity to reach out, giving them contact information. So we definitely do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll move us into the second presentation. So this one, here we go, is about our authorizer evaluation. So this includes the outcomes of our Fall 2020 pilot. And I'll start with some background information and then share where we are in the development of the evaluation process itself. So within the last three years, we've really seen several changes to the state's charter law that have been intentional and with a focus on shifting to quality, focusing on quality itself. So in 2017, the charter law was amended to require the State Board to adopt the Quality Authorizing Standards. By 2018, the law was amended again to allow authorizers to collect an authorizer fee. And then in 2019, it was amended for a third time to create the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission and to charge the State Board with the task of evaluating authorizers. And so all of these changes have really kept the true goal at the center, that if we focus on increasing authorizer quality, we'll ultimately be improving the quality and increase educational opportunities for our students. This slide outlines the specifics of the State Board's newest charge to ensure the effective operation of authorizers and evaluate authorizer quality through periodic evaluations. The law also states that any authorizer that fails to remedy any noncompliance found through an evaluation may receive a reduction in their authorizer fees. The evaluation will include all six of the state's charter school authorizers, and they're all listed here. These authorizers will be evaluated at a minimum every two years. Our staff developed the evaluation process through a partnership with an education consulting agency, Spore. It involved authorizer representatives, charter school operators, and charter school support organizations in our development process over the last year as well. Tennessee is now the fourth state to implement an authorizer evaluation system. We have Ohio, Minnesota, and Missouri being the other three. And our staff met with representatives from these states to learn from their successes and challenges as part of our development process as well. The evaluation process consists of several key elements. I'm going to walk through those next. First, they occur at least every two years with a cohort of three authorizers. So depending on the overall rating that an authorizer receives through their evaluation, they may be exempt from completing a subsequent evaluation or required to complete another evaluation the following year. Based on an authorizer's alignment to the State Board's Quality Charter Authorizing Standards, which are inclusive of national best practices as well as state law and State Board rule, they're facilitated by State Board staff and external evaluators who really We really believe that the inclusion of the external evaluators in particular is a critical part of our system, as these evaluators bring multiple perspectives and expertise to our process. They also have, at the end of the evaluation week, authorizers receiving preliminary scores and an opportunity to review a draft of their evaluation report for factual corrections prior to public release. The evaluation reports are presented to you all annually at your first meeting following the evaluation cycle and then publicly shared to our state board website. And during a non-evaluation year, authorizers complete a self-assessment and any corrective action plans if required as a result of their evaluation. The evaluation rubric encompasses these main authorizing responsibilities that you see listed here, including an opportunity for bonus points. And the evaluation team considers an evidence base that includes the authorizer's submitted documentation, an interview with school leaders, and an interview with the authorizing staff. I'll also add that should an authorizer have been through any appeal cycles within their two-year review term, the recommendation report and final decision would also be considered as part of an evidence base for an evaluation. The evaluation culminates with a final report, which includes standard scores, specific evaluative comments, and overall rating and any required follow-up actions. In terms of those follow-up actions, only those who receive one of the bottom two scores of approaching satisfactory or unsatisfactory incomplete would be required to complete the corrective action plan. So this slide also shows a set of score ranges for each of our evaluation ratings, and these were determined based on the outcomes of the pilot, which I'll discuss more in a moment. Our six charter school authorizers across the state are split into two cohorts, with the first cohort beginning their formal evaluations this fall. These cohorts will not change and were determined based on both the Achievement School District and Metro Nashville's willingness to participate in this fall pilot, which moved them into Cohort Two, which will start in fall 2022. In terms of timeline, an evaluation cycle runs for two years and includes the components that you see depicted here in this sample timeline. So with Cohort One being represented in purple and Two in blue, you can see how the cycle would flow for our authorizers. The cycle officially kicks off in August for Cohort One this year, with an authorizer orientation, followed by the document submission window, the evaluation, and evaluation outcomes shared at the state board meeting following the conclusion of an evaluation. It is around this time that Cohort Two would begin her cycle with a self-evaluation that they submit at the start of the year. And then from there, the cycle repeats itself. You'll also see noted here with the asterisk included during the months of March through July, and authorizers may be responsible for completing required items by their corrective action plan and updating documentation prior to your next evaluation, and these timelines may vary. So next, I'll move into outcomes of the fall 2020 pilot. The pilot evaluation began this past August and wrapped in January, and we invited all authorizers to voluntarily participate for the benefit of receiving informal feedback on their authorizer processes and practices, as well as the opportunity to delay a formal evaluation until 2022. So we're especially grateful to Metro Nashville and the Achievement School District for opting in. We also invited the authorizing staff of all of our authorizers to serve as evaluators for the benefit of gaining a deeper knowledge before their own evaluation and as well as a deeper knowledge of the process itself. So for the pilot, Shelby County Schools, Metro Nashville, and the Charter Commission volunteered to participate as evaluators. The pilot followed the full evaluation process and was an opportunity for us and the two authorizers to really gain valuable feedback and further refine our processes. And the results of the pilot served as the baseline to gauge those thresholds that I showed you earlier for the overall ratings, as well as determine areas of strengths and challenges across some of our authorizers. This knowledge helped us to determine some topics for additional technical support that we will be providing to our authorizers beginning later this month. As for our lessons learned, really distilled them down to three key ideas. The first one is that an evaluation is an iterative process. So with each evaluation cycle, we will continue to refine our processes, and our authorizers will continue working towards the high bar that we have set in our quality charter authorizing standards, thus improving our Tennessee charter schools. The second is that evaluations are both intensive and important. The evaluation rubric is comprised of 24 standards based on national best practices, state law, and state board rule. And authorizers have to really plan ahead to successfully prepare for an evaluation. These standards are meant to serve as a guide for the work related to authorizing all the time and not just during an evaluation. And then, third, our authorizers, charter schools, and ultimately, our students will benefit from this work. Our focus is on continuous improvement for the purpose of increasing quality educational opportunities for all Tennessee students. And there is evidence among the other states that have a similar process that they have seen a positive correlation between evaluations and student achievement. And we believe that we'll see the same results. So in terms of next steps, we have the Authorizer Evaluation Rule on final reading tomorrow and have developed its companion policy, which is on first reading tomorrow as well. And we're continuing to work with School Works to provide those technical assistance sessions to our authorizers in key areas ahead of the first formal evaluations, which will begin this fall. We've made a great deal of progress, and we're really pleased with the outcomes of the pilot. And upon your approval of the rule and policy, we'll be set to begin our formal evaluations in August. So with that, I'll pause here. What questions can I answer for you on authorizer evaluations?
I can't recall. In our rule, getting some feedback. If we have someone who gets one of the lower two ratings and has to come back with a corrective action plan, what happens if they don't, their corrective action plan that they implement still doesn't meet the standard? What's our fallback there?
So there's a few different things that could happen. If, one, they didn't complete a corrective action plan. If they didn't complete all of the items that they had listed on that plan, then they could be at risk of losing their authorizer fee funding. Or if they go through another evaluation and receive the same, or perhaps even a lower score, then they could equally be at risk of the reduction in authorizer fee funding.
Thank you.
I'll jump in while people are thinking if there are other questions, because I just, I want to say thank you to Ally first for the great work on this. This is, I think, really important new work that the board is taking on, and I wanted to make sure that you all knew what had happened during the pilot phase this last year and all the, again, things that we've learned over the process of that pilot period that's going to lead into our, you know, first evaluation cohort this fall with stakes, as Ally just pointed out in response to Bob's question. I think this is really, you know, we've learned so much as authorizers in the last few years with the charter schools that we've worked with across the state. And I think we're now in a position where we can really help our other authorizers across the state make sure that we're living up to the standards that we've set in state law and that we know will make a difference for the quality of schools across our state and the charter sector. So, yeah, I think it's important for the public to know. We're not getting out of the charter business at the state board necessarily. We're just transitioning to a new phase of the work and one that hopefully will be a positive addition to the sector across Tennessee. So I don't know if there's other questions, but just wanted to make sure everyone understood. We're really not getting out of the business. We're just, you know, transitioning to a new role.
And Sarah, I do want to echo your comments, because I think, you know, Ally, during this period of time, especially with Tess transitioning to her new role, the work that you've taken on and this evaluation piece, I know we talked about it quite a bit before Tess was transitioning and that this would be an important piece of work that we would be taking on during this period of time. So I applaud you for the great work that you have done, and you have kept the ship afloat, so to speak. And I know that you've had great interactions with the Charter Commission, as well as Tess through the process. But I do want to thank you and applaud you for the great work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions about the authorizing evaluation work before we move to our, the appeal that's up at this meeting? All right, Ally. I'll start this presentation and then turn it to Ally for some of the details. But as we've spoken with each of you in preparation for tomorrow's meeting, you know that there is a charter amendment appeal up before you. It may be the last one that we hear. It may not. We'll see, depending on how things shake out in terms of our role for amendment appeals. But in any case, this one comes to us from Intrepid College Prep, which is in Metro Nashville. Ally, if you'll go to the next slide. We'll start with just reminding the board and the public of the statutory charge for amendment appeals. It's TCA 4913-110D. It says that the governing body of a charter school may petition the authorizer to amend the original charter agreement, so that binding agreement that gets set initially when a charter is approved. And timelines for approval and appeal are determined by the state board. In this case, Intrepid College Prep, as I mentioned, is in Metro Nashville, was denied their amendment petition by their authorizer on November 24th, 2020. Next slide. Per state board rule, a charter school in that position has the ability to appeal that decision to the state board. In this case, and in any case, with an amendment appeal, our staff goes through several pieces of review that culminate in the recommendations that I'm making to you for tomorrow's meeting. We request documentation from both the authorizer and the school, gathering as much evidence as we can to understand the reasons cited by the authorizer for denying amendment appeal. We held, in this case, a virtual public hearing, which was on January 12th. We accept public comment both during, or as part of that hearing, as well as just in written form, part of our process. And then, like we do with any kind of appeal, we conduct a complete review of the record, and that, again, culminates in my recommendation to the board. In this case, for an amendment appeal, the standard of review is the best interest standard. So in order to overturn the local district's decision to deny the amendment appeal, the board must find that it was contrary to the best interests of the community, students, or LEA. Okay, next slide. In this case, based on our findings of fact and review of the record, we'll talk in more detail in just a moment in terms of some of the specifics. But my recommendation to the board is to uphold the decision of Metro Nashville to deny Intrepid's amendment petition. And again, I'm going to look to Ally to go through some of the detail, but I'll just say on the outset that there's a lot to be excited about in terms of the new leadership at Intrepid, the changes that they are in the process of making, the attention that they are giving to how they think about academic coaching and organizing their high school model. We heard a lot of things at the public hearing that gave me confidence that they're headed in the right direction. But for a number of reasons that Ally will go into, we're still short on information as to how those changes are taking effect. And so for my recommendation, at this moment, it is to uphold the local district's decision. Ally, I'll turn it over to you now, though, to walk through some of the specifics.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Morrison. So I'll start with just a brief overview of the timeline and then move into the facts and analysis. So Intrepid has been in operation for seven years. They opened their doors in August of 2013 to a class of fifth-grade students, and they now serve grades five through 12. In alignment with state board rules, they submitted a letter of intent to amend their agreement on September 1st to Metro Nashville and an application on October 1st. And Metro Nashville's Office of Charter Schools reviewed the amendment application and presented their findings to their Board of Education at their board meeting on November 24th. The Board of Education voted to deny the amendment application, and Intrepid appealed that decision to the state board on December 4th. Start with the facts. Intrepid's amendment application requested a gradual expansion to its enrollment maximum by a total of 90/60. Intrepid stated that the amendment would allow the school to expand its programmatic offerings at the high school and to accommodate increased demand for the school due to the growing population in the Antioch community of Nashville. It was only during the public hearing that Intrepid stated that the amendment would allow the school to accept a larger fifth-grade and ninth-grade class. And without the amendment, the school would have to accept a smaller fifth-grade class to stay within its current enrollment max. Metro Nashville Board of Education's decision to deny the amendment application was based on three facts. One, Metro Nashville plans to build a new middle school and an expansion onto Kane Ridge High School in the Antioch community and believes that granting this amendment would undermine their long-term planning efforts to provide additional capacity in the area over the next two to three years. Two, they express concern with Intrepid's downward trend in its math, ELA, and T-OS results over the last three years. And then, three, they stated that there were no material changes in circumstance for the school that would justify the need to increase enrollment. Granting their request would actually reward Intrepid's failure to manage its enrollment, and that enrollment increase would be better addressed during the renewal process. Based on a review of these facts, our team determined that while the school presented data that shows its students are outperforming the district on state assessments and showed strong ACT scores from its first class of seniors, their assessment scores have been on a steady decline over the last three years, particularly in math. And without any state assessment data from the 1920 school year, we can't determine if their efforts to improve their academic achievement have been effective. Additionally, the school began their renewal process in two years, and that will likely be a better time to address an enrollment increase. By then, there will be additional academic data to consider, as well as the likelihood that the new middle school that Metro is planning will be complete and provide a clearer picture to the state capacity in the Antioch community. So in addition to the facts and analysis that I just presented, we also consider the local LEAs' alignment to our quality charter authorizing standards. So MMPS demonstrated alignment to our standards by providing its charter schools with an application and a process to amend their charter agreement, and they base their decision in part on academic performance. Metro Nashville's decision to allow the school more time to turn around its declining academic scores before granting a request to expand enrollment is in alignment with quality practices. As such, our executive director's recommendation is as follows. While Intrepid is attempting to amend its enrollment cap to respond to community demand, MMPS presented evidence of the school's declining academic achievement over the last three years. MMPS would prefer to consider granting Intrepid additional seats at the renewal stage in 2023, after which more information will be available regarding the school's continued academic performance and seat capacity in the area. Waiting to see if the school can turn around its declining Tianreni scores before granting a request to expand enrollment is in keeping with our quality charter authorizing standards. And therefore, the executive director recommends that the state board uphold the decision of Metro Nashville to deny the amendment petition of Intrepid College Prep. So with that, I'll open it up for our members for any discussion and questions.
How many seats are we talking about in the, in the two sections or three sections? Or what does that look like? What was the request?
The request was for 96 additional seats spread across a variety of their grades.
Yeah, they serve grades five through 12, Larry, so it would be dispersed across those two schools.
I think it's important to note that Intrepid's scores do exceed the local districts in the area, but they have been on the decline recently. And so I think this, I agree, I think these next two years will be important to show they can turn that around. How do their scores, that decline, do we know how that compares to decline from the local schools? Have they been equally in decline, or have they held steady? Do we know?
I didn't do too much of a deep dive into the other schools in the area apart from this most recent round of testing, so I can't say if they've declined. I would imagine they've remained pretty steady, but I don't have that exact data.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from anyone on this appeal? I know we've talked with most of you about it at this point, but anything else that members are wanting to ask of Ally or myself? Okay. We'll have the chance tomorrow to continue talking about it just a little bit as part of the meeting. But thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes our trifecta of charter presentations. Thank you to Ally, too, for taking us through all of that.
Thank you. Yes, and next up is Dr. Matthew Owen with Taster, and we're going to turn it over. And we're going to turn it over to him to enlighten us in this very important subject that we've had lots of conversations about. So, Dr. Owen, it's yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, board members. You are more than welcome to call me Matt. And I am the Policy Coordinator at the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, or TASER. I also want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I know that broadband is a topic that is of interest to a lot of you and I also think it certainly goes without saying that over the last year, the pandemic has heightened public awareness of broadband's importance for communities and individuals, particularly when it comes to education. At the same time, I think it's also worth acknowledging that these issues and many of the efforts to address them predate the pandemic. And so with that, I am going to focus my presentation today on what we know about the current status quo for broadband access and adoption in Tennessee, as well as what is being done to address coverage and adoption gaps. And then I will close with recommendations that TASER included in its most recent broadband report. Before I get there, just briefly on who we are at TASER. For the last four decades, the commission has served as a forum for the discussion and resolution of intergovernmental problems in Tennessee. And it provides research on issues of public policy to support state and local officials in order to improve the overall quality of government in the state and to better serve its citizens. You can see our commission members include state legislators, local officials, executive branch representatives, two private citizens, and the Comptroller of the Treasury. Regarding the commission's work on broadband, our current report, which was approved by our members and published last month, is actually an update to a report that we released four years ago. That earlier report identified existing public and private sector initiatives for expanding coverage and increasing broadband adoption in the state. And it also made several recommendations which emphasized opportunities to work, for the government to work with the private sector, both for-profit and nonprofit, to fill remaining coverage and adoption gaps in the manner least costly to taxpayers without expanding the role of government. These recommendations ultimately helped guide policy changes that were included in the Tennessee Broadband Accessibility Act of 2017. And this act, the changes from this act are summarized on this slide. In particular, it established a state broadband grant program to help offset the cost of expanding coverage in unserved areas while also authorizing that program to grant funds to libraries to help facilitate those libraries' broadband adoption efforts. It established a tax credit for broadband providers that has since been repealed for broadband investment in underdeveloped counties in the state. It removed barriers to entry for would-be providers by authorizing electric cooperatives to provide broadband within their electric service areas. And it also established a pathway for communities to signal providers that they have streamlined local permitting processes and removed local regulatory barriers to broadband investment by being designated as broadband-ready communities. And that link, I'm not going to go to it right now, but it's not that exciting. But if you click on that link, that'll send you to a list of the communities that the Department of Economic and Community Development has designated as broadband-ready communities. And in the handout that should also have been provided to you, we included a map that also shows you where each of those broadband-ready communities is located in the state. So currently, we have 55 local governments that have received that designation and that includes 49 counties and nine cities. In addition to all of that, the act also directed the commission to update its 2017 report by January of this year. And so that brings us pretty much up to the present. And I'll sort of get into what we found. So for both of those reports, one of the main questions that we focused on is how many Tennesseans have access to broadband? And then how many subscribe to broadband service? Now, that seems like it should be a basic question with a straightforward answer, but unfortunately, that's not quite the case. And so before I dive into the details there, I'll quickly go over some of the top-line trends that we found. So Tennessee continues to make progress toward eliminating coverage gaps and increasing rates of broadband adoption. Though I will say that gaps in access and adoption still remain. The urban-rural divide in terms of broadband access also persists with a greater percentage of those living in urban areas having access to broadband when compared to those living in rural areas. And when compared to other states and the District of Columbia, Tennessee ranks near the middle of the pack when it comes to broadband access and adoption. We are 34th overall and sixth in the southeast when it comes to broadband access and 31st overall and, again, sixth in the southeast in terms of broadband adoption. And though I do want to make a note that the data that we had to use to come up with those rankings is actually from December 2018, so it's now almost two years old. And so that lag in data is something to keep in mind, too, as I go through this presentation because it's going to keep coming up several times. So now, as for the details behind these trends, I'm going to start at the bottom of this slide and what qualifies as broadband. In our report, we define broadband using the standard adopted by the Federal Communications Commission, which defines broadband as internet service with a minimum capacity or speed of 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload. For now, this standard appears capable of supporting the minimum needs of typical users based on commonly performed tasks. So for example, it appears to be enough to support video streaming and video conferencing based on the suggested minimum requirements for popular platforms, though we do note in the report that this standard may not meet all current or future needs. And one, you know, I think thing to be aware of with this is, again, if you're in a household where you have multiple people using the internet at once, using the same connection, they're going to be sharing that connection's capacity. So as you multiply the number of people in the household and the number of tasks they're performing, that standard may not be enough. As more people have begun working and learning from home, the providers who we interviewed from this report also reported to us that many of their customers have been opting for faster speed tiers since the onset of the pandemic, so you may be seeing some of that taking place. Of course, for schools where you also have many students and teachers potentially accessing the internet at once, faster speeds than the 25.3 minimum are recommended by the FCC. Specifically, the FCC recommends that schools have networks with speeds of 100 megabits per second per 1,000 students and staff in the short term with a long-term goal of 1 gigabit per second per 1,000 students and staff. According to the Tennessee Department of Education, all schools in the state currently have connections that meet the FCC's short-term goal, while approximately 50 to 60% of schools already have connections that meet the long-term goal. Moving up here, as for who has access to broadband meeting to 25.3 standard in Tennessee, data released by the FCC showed that almost 94% of Tennesseans live in census blocks where at least one provider reported offering wireline or fixed wireless service with a capacity of 25.3 or greater as of December 2019. That December 2019 dataset is the most recent publicly available dataset. And to give you a sense of the lag between when those data are reported and when they're ultimately released, we did not get access to that data until November of 2020. So there is a considerable lag between when we get access to it. And then in addition to that, the data don't actually show whether everyone in these census blocks has access to service at the reported speeds because providers are not asked to report address-specific data to the FCC. Instead, providers file lists of census blocks where they can or do offer service to at least one location. And if a provider reports that it can offer service to at least one location in a census block, the FCC designates that entire block as served. As a result, the FCC coverage data represents the maximum extent of broadband access at the time at which they are reported. Again, to reference back to the maps that were included in the handout that we emailed to you as well, to give a better sense of which areas of the state have access reported and which don't, we have included our broadband access maps for you that we created for our report. These maps are based on the 2019 December dataset from the FCC and we put them together, if you're wondering why they're grouped the way they are, these are the nine maps that follow the broadband-ready communities map. And they are grouped by development district in Tennessee. And we really just did that to make the details a bit easier to see. Whenever I put together a statewide map, it's hard to see anything on it, on any piece of paper that will fit. So I know we just talked about the limitations of the FCC data, but what the data do show is that access to broadband has increased in the years since we published our first report. That first report relied on data from December of 2015, which showed that at that time, approximately 88% of Tennesseans lived in census blocks where providers reported offering broadband. And as for broadband adoption, the latest data we have from the FCC, at least at the time that we published our report, was only from December 2018. At that time, 58% of households in census blocks where at least one provider reported offering broadband subscribed to the service. And similar to the trend for broadband access, that represents an increase in broadband adoption from our prior report where we found that the rate was only 40% based on December 2014 data. Although these increases in access and adoption are encouraging, there still appears to be a significant number of households that don't have access to broadband, while there also appears to be a significant number that have access to broadband but aren't subscribing to service. The good news is that Tennessee is well-placed to address these remaining gaps based on the public and private initiatives that are already in place. Leaving aside for the moment the issue of how to expand broadband coverage, I'll focus first on increasing broadband adoption. There are a number of other resources available to help people get online. And while there's no single strategy that we or other researchers have identified as the key for increasing rates of broadband adoption, what has been found is that strategies that are tailored to meet community needs can be effective. So what are those needs? Or put another way, what are the barriers that need to be overcome? Cost continues to be among the most cited reasons why individuals say they choose not to subscribe to broadband service at home. This includes both the cost of the service itself as well as the cost of devices. In other cases, people say that they just simply don't want service or that they don't see the need for the service. To provide some context around that, the Pew Research Center in a 2019 survey found that 80% of respondents who didn't subscribe to home broadband service said they were uninterested in having it in the future and 60% of those had never had home broadband at any point in the past. In the same survey, half of those who didn't have home broadband cited the cost of service among the reasons for not subscribing and nearly one-third cited the cost of computers. So what that shows, I think, is that there really is no one-size-fits-all solution when it comes to increasing broadband adoption. And there also could be considerable overlap for individuals for the reasons for why they're not, or they're choosing not to adopt broadband when that service is available to them. In terms of the strategies or resources that are out there, some of them, like digital literacy training, are intended to help people become more comfortable and confident in using the internet and using computers. Others address cost issues, whether that be for service or devices. And I will also say that there are a lot of public and private entities that are tackling this issue already. For example, many broadband providers offer low-cost service options for qualifying households. Some of them also help connect customers to low-cost device options available from other entities as well as digital literacy training opportunities. And that's just one example of the training or the cost support resources that are available from the private sector. In terms of the public sector, I included a link in the slide to the digital literacy, or excuse me, the digital inclusion toolkit that was created by the Department of Economic and Community Development. This, at that link, you'll see a list of resources and other links that can be used as a starting point for communities in thinking about how to help their residents get connected. Other examples include the federal Lifeline Program, which subsidizes the cost of service for qualifying households. And in Tennessee, our local libraries and our schools are also important resources when it comes to helping the populations that they serve get online. For schools in particular, the examples that we discuss in our report are probably familiar to you all. They include efforts to ensure that students have access to devices by making laptops or tablets available to be taken home. And we know that a lot of districts, for a lot of districts, this was something that they've been working on in the years that predated the pandemic, but it certainly has become a focus as remote learning has become something that we all have to do. Of course, a device is only part of the equation. So many of our school systems are also trying to help improve access to the internet for their students, particularly for those who cannot afford service or for whom service is unavailable. In some cases, this has meant providing students with mobile wireless hotspots that can be used to access mobile wireless service. However, this is not a solution for all communities or at least all areas of all communities because there are some areas that lack adequate mobile wireless service as well. As a result, some districts are providing Wi-Fi access points at fixed locations around their communities to help students get online. For example, we've heard them being placed in church parking lots and the parking lots of local chambers of commerce. And we even, multiple broadband providers told us that they have access points in their parking lots as well. It's also possible to put the mobile wireless hotspots on buses and then park those buses in areas around the community with adequate wireless service. And I don't bring all these examples up to suggest that they are long-term substitutes for home internet service, they're not. But what they are are short-term solutions that our school districts are using to help bridge the gaps for their students. And we've also had other examples of districts that are partnering with local governments, businesses, and nonprofit organizations in their communities to actually pay for home broadband service for families in their districts who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. And so I think Hamilton County is the one example that comes to mind for doing that. So I'm thinking about how to provide these services, what stands in the way. In our conversation with representatives for different school systems, the barriers, or the barrier that they face in implementing these types of supports is often cost. There have been recent efforts in the last few years to direct funding to schools for technology, particularly with the onset of the pandemic. Specifically, state and local governments have made Federal CARES Act funding available to school systems for these purposes. And I know that just last week, the Department of Education announced an agreement with one of the mobile wireless carriers to make hotspots available for districts around the state as well. So in putting this all together for broadband adoption, thinking about what all this means, I think that the two things to focus on are, first, what are the specific needs of the individuals or the groups in your community when it comes to broadband adoption? And then on top of that, figuring out how to fund or how to provide supports or resources that they may need. Returning to the issue of broadband access. When it comes to barriers to expanding coverage, the challenging economics of providing broadband remains a problem. In particular, low population densities, which result in fewer potential customers and therefore less revenue per mile of line constructed, can make it particularly difficult for providers to cover their costs and make a business case for serving some areas. To help providers overcome these cost barriers in unserved areas, the state has implemented a broadband grant program that I talked about earlier in 2017. That program is administered by the Department of Economic and Community Development and it awards funding to providers to partially offset the cost of deploying their networks. Through its first three rounds, the program has awarded a total of more than $44 million to 39 projects. Because ECD limits grants to no more than 50% of the overall project costs, more than $44 million in matching funds will also be invested in these projects, resulting in a total investment in broadband expansion of more than $88 million, public and private. Looking forward for this year, this program is still active. There is approximately $15 million available for the fourth round of the grant program and they expect to award grants later this spring. Each grant also includes a requirement for the recipient to expand coverage to the unserved homes and businesses in its project area. And providers must meet these requirements to receive their full grant awards. So in terms of what this has meant for the first three rounds, the first three rounds of the program included a total of 26,300 homes and businesses and the overall build-out requirements for providers. requirements for providers. So we would anticipate that that will ultimately be the number of homes at least that receive service. We know in the first round, which at the time we published our report, was the, the only round that had a complete data reported yet, that with a build-out requirement of around 5,200 homes and businesses, actually 7,000 homes and businesses ended up receiving service. Now, in addition to the funding that is available through the state grant program, there's also a sizable amount of federal funding available through a variety of programs that's also helping to expand coverage in the state. This includes sixty-two projects that were awarded a total of $61 million in 2020 from the state's share of the Cares Act. And it also includes funding that was just awarded through the FCC's Rural Digital Opportunity Fund auction, which will provide the eleven winning bidders in Tennessee a combined total of up to $149 million over the next ten years. In the handout that we provided that had the maps in it, we did include a set of maps that does show where some of the grant areas are located in Tennessee. Unfortunately, we did not have a complete subset of federal data to show where all the federal money has gone, but we were able to show or to map all of the areas that have received money through the first three rounds of the state grant program, as well as all of the areas that have received, or that received funding through the Cares Act. In addition to that, we were able to show funding for the FCC's, the last two auctions, actually, that the FCC has conducted, that's both the recent Digital Opportunity Fund auction and its previous Connect America Fund auction. So if you're looking for those maps, the, the third set of maps, it's the, the last nine maps in the handout that we provided. Unfortunately, that does not include any of the funding that the state has received from the U.S. Department of Agriculture or from the Appalachian Regional Commission. But there has been a significant amount of funding from those two agencies to projects in Tennessee as well. Now, one of the questions that all of this raises is, if we're spending all of this money, how many unserved locations are left and what is needed to get service to all of them? As part of our research, Taster staff developed a couple of rough estimates of the number of unserved homes remaining and the cost to serve them. Because of the limitations in FCC data and the lack of available information on the exact boundaries of the federally funded projects, we were unable to calculate the exact number of housing units remaining after accounting for projects that have received funding from state and federal programs. But keeping those things in mind, Taster staff estimate that there are at least 194,400 homes located in census blocks where no provider reported twenty-five-three service as of December 2019. That's the top row of this table. The various estimates of the cost to serve these homes and the three columns on the right of the table are all based on the cost per location for projects in the first three rounds of the state grant program. The estimates in the bottom row represent our attempts to account for the coverage expansions resulting from projects already awarded, state or federal funding, that haven't been completed yet or that haven't filtered through the FCC data yet. Taster staff estimate that there are at least 36,920 homes in census blocks where no provider reported service as of December 2019 that will not receive broadband from existing state or federally funded projects. Two of the takeaways from all of this when it comes to broadband access is, first, we don't have an exact number of the homes or businesses that are unserved or the cost to serve them. And second, the challenging economics of providing broadband in some unserved areas means that filling the remaining coverage gaps will likely require a combination of public and private resources. And that is a good transition to talk about some of our recommendations. We included five recommendations in our report that we just published last month. One of those recommendations deals with the state obtaining better data on broadband access. We've talked about the limitations and the existing FCC data, and so the commission recommended that the state should work with broadband providers to develop its own broadband coverage maps. The idea here is that it would be beneficial to state officials and to local officials to have a better understanding of where coverage is in the state and to help assess our progress at closing those coverage gaps, as well as to assess the effectiveness at any programs that are implemented. We have another recommendation. This one is related to the support for broadband adoption. The commission recommended that local governments in the state should continue to identify opportunities to increase funding for libraries and schools to assist their efforts at facilitating broadband adoption in their communities, and in particular, that the state should continue to award grants to libraries through the state broadband grant program to help them with their broadband adoption efforts. The last three recommendations all deal with expanding broadband access. The commission recommended that the state continue funding the broadband grant program and that the state could also consider increasing its annual appropriations to the program to help accelerate broadband expansion. Based on a review of that program and on our review of other aspects of the broadband, of the 2017 broadband law, the commission also recommended that local governments in the state should consider tying any new incentives for broadband providers directly to coverage expansions, while limiting the overall share of project costs that those incentives pay for. The final recommendation in the report relates to electric cooperatives and municipal utilities providing broadband. I'm going to give a little bit of background on this. I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that the 2017 Act authorized electric cooperatives to provide broadband. Of the twenty-two electric cooperatives that serve parts of Tennessee, there are now thirteen that are either providing broadband or will be in the near future. That's in the last four years since they were granted that authority. The municipal utilities in the state, or municipal electric systems, I should say, have been authorized to provide broadband since 1999 under state law, and currently around fifteen of the fifty-four, maybe fifty-three or so municipal utilities in the state provide broadband in their electric service areas. So although they are authorized under state law to provide broadband, state law does contain restrictions in it that with limited exceptions prevent electric cooperatives and municipal utilities from providing broadband outside of their electric service areas. Multiple bills in recent sessions of the General Assembly would have decreased or eliminated these territorial restrictions. And we do, we did have electric cooperatives and municipal utilities who we talked to who say that if those restrictions were eliminated, there are areas outside of their electric territories that they would be willing to serve. But it's also worth noting the potential risks that removing this restriction could pose for electric ratepayers in the event that broadband projects fail. So weighing those potential benefits against these potential risks, the commission recommended that the state should consider eliminating or easing the existing territorial restrictions on electric cooperatives and municipal electric systems. And in doing so, the state should also consider ways that it can protect electric ratepayers, for example, by prohibiting these cooperatives and utilities from pledging, loaning, or otherwise using electric system assets or revenues to finance broadband projects outside of their electric service areas. So that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you all for your time, and I am happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Who's overwhelmed besides me? And I've read the presentation before you delivered it, Matt, so thank you so much. I'm going to hold off and see if there are any questions from other board members. I know a lot of us have had great interest, as I've already stated, and so I will see who might want to ask you some questions.
Okay, this is Bob. I have a question. Obviously, access to broadband for, for all students is important, and providing libraries and schools, the opportunity for the students to come there and use those is certainly helpful. But several students, particularly in the rural area, live tens of miles away from, from the schools and the libraries. And so, you know, somehow, and I'm glad to see the recommendations being made on how to expand that broadband, but somehow we got to continue to work to provide broadband access to the students at their location instead of having them move forward. Talked about that? You're muted.
No, sorry. So I think that, that is an excellent point. And, you know, I think that's partially why, you know, when you look at some of the strategies when it comes to Wi-Fi access points, or, you know, if you're putting a hotspot on a bus and parking that in a centralized location or something like that, you know, those are, those are good solutions, and I don't want to negate their value that they can have for communities, but, but to your point, they are certainly short-term solutions, and, and that if we're going to look at this in the long term, then giving access to all the homes, all the businesses in the state is, is certainly, you know, it's, it's going to be part of the long-term goal, but that's a stepping stone to get there. So what can you do in the, what can you do in the short term to try to, to at least provide some access for those who don't have it at their home? So I think that's, that's a lot of what our schools and libraries are really trying to, to fill in those gaps as best they can right now.
I think your point about just because a house in a census block has broadband and that census block is considered to have broadband across the whole block. I know several instances of where, whether it's Comcast or whomever, will take broadband to a certain place, but if the census block is really rural, it's financially not worth their while to run that fiber on another half a mile or whatever it takes to get the broadband to a group of homes that are further out. Somehow, again, working with the state and with incentives, et cetera, we've got to incentivize to be able to provide that, you know, from a business deal, negative business deal for, to get those broadband out and not just use the census block as the data, but as you recommend, actually, how many homes out there don't have broadband? I think that's important.
Oh, yeah, thank you. And I, and I do want to state too, the, even though at the moment, the, the current data that we have from the federal government is only at that census block level, I know that the Department of Economic and Community Development, as, as they're evaluating grant applications, they do provide applicants with the opportunity to provide evidence that a census block that is listed as served by the FCC is in fact unserved or only partially served. So there is an ability right now under the, under ECD's current grant program for providers to give funding for those portions of blocks where it's, it may be difficult for them to make a business case on their own to expand coverage to those areas, but where, you know, if you just look at the, the map produced from the FCC data without trying to get behind that data, it looks like everybody's covered. So that is something that I know ECD is working on or has a process already in place to try to do through their grant program.
Are there any other questions? Because I, I have a couple, but I want to give other members an opportunity first.
I'd ask, but you're muted.
That's somewhat of a false comfort on that coverage map, because when, when this all started back a year, almost a year ago, I talked to superintendents across my district, which is, is somewhat rural, and I think in the rural area, the consensus I got, and this anecdotal, of course, is that seventy percent of their students did not have access. And even in the suburban, like a Cuyahoga or Arlington, and one of them said, he estimated it was about thirty percent, which sort of surprised me. And so I think that, you know, it's, it's broadband to the premises, which is, I think, ought to become the standard. The other piece is the speed. If you've got three children at home and they're all in virtual environments and they're all three on it once, and mom and dad and others are on there, that, that eats up that, that capacity pretty quickly. I, I, I do think that there's two other areas that I'm sure y'all are, are having conversations with that have similar interests, and that's the telehealth area, and then agribusiness, and how important broadband is in those two areas, especially as it relates, in my view, to, to the rural area. And then we have a, a hunting place over in Arkansas, and this year we, we, we put in broadband using a satellite, and it's like, it was like $900 for installation and a hundred and something a month. So that, that affordability is a real challenge at, at all levels of this, and, and I'm not sure how you solve it. So accessibility and affordability just seem to be two issues that you, you've alluded to. But the third thing I've heard that's a real challenge is, is getting pole access by these broadband companies across the utility. And I don't know if y'all have looked at that, but that's apparently pretty challenging to get cooperation, you know, everybody's running a business, I guess. But anyway, those are just some comments and observations I've had. But that broadband to the premises, rather than in the census block, is, seems to me to be a better measure as we go forward.
No, yeah, and, and I, to give it to, and I started to include this in my presentation, so the state of Georgia, and, and I don't want to bring this example up to suggest that we would find exactly the same results in Tennessee if we were to go forward with broadband maps, but over the last two years, the state of Georgia has spent time developing its own broadband coverage maps, working with providers to gather data at the address level. And what they found when they did that is that there were an additional 255,000 homes and businesses in that state that were ultimately located in areas that were at best only partially served, that the FCC had said were in areas that were fully served. So, you know, we do know that there, that that FCC data represents the maximum extent of coverage at the time that it's reported.
Right.
And so it's just a matter of figuring out, if we can get more precise data, if we can get a better sense of, of where, who does and who does not have broadband. I, you know, I think the point that you brought up about telehealth and agribusiness are really good ones. I didn't go into this in our presentation, but we do, you know, we did try to include some of that information in our report. I, you know, I think especially with the pandemic, Vanderbilt saw, Vanderbilt University Medical Center saw a fairly incredible increase in the number of telehealth visits that it was performing since the beginning of the pandemic last March. And then in terms of agribusiness, the USDA has done a lot of good research in terms of what they would anticipate the economic benefits would be if broadband were widely available to, to farms and to other agribusinesses. I know, this wasn't necessarily farm-specific, but I, I know that Purdue University did a study of a cooperative service area in rural Indiana, and they found that, you know, when you combine all of the potential benefits, whether it be for education, whether it be for telehealth, medicine, whether it just be for, for business development or for agriculture, that there is a return of four dollars in benefits for every one dollar invested in broadband in that community that they would project. So we know that the, the benefits are likely to be out there. It's, it's just a matter of, of making those numbers work and, and getting service there. We did look at poll attachments, and I'm happy to go into the details of poll attachments if you'd like. Suffice it to say, yeah, we, so we, that is something that we have looked at, and, and that is something where when you look at the cost of poll attachments, the states, what the state can and cannot do with that are somewhat limited because those are regulated by the Tennessee Valley Authority in Tennessee, at least the, the price of poll attachments. And so there are limits to, to what the state has at its disposal when it comes to regulating those.
Thank you.
Before I do my, say mine?
I had one thing you just made a comment about, about the TVA and poll attachments. I assume that we are talking to the TVA and convincing them the importance of, of playing along with us here and helping us out. I mean, what's, what's going on there?
So we did talk with TVA staff. We, for, for this particular report, we, we went into more detail with them back in 2017 for, for our research for 2021. What we did was, was mostly just clarify whether any changes had been made to their formula that they used, and they, they confirmed that there had not been any changes since our last report. I don't want to speak for TVA specifically about any of their positions, but generally speaking, they are, they are tasked under federal law with providing electricity at the lowest feasible rates for their customers across the valley, and so they take that role of the rate regulator, rate regulator very seriously. And so that's some of the input that went in from their end in terms of developing their current poll attachment fee formula. When we looked at that formula back in 2017, it produces poll attachment fees that are roughly four times as great as the fees that are produced under the FCC's poll roughly four times as great as the fees that are produced under the FCC's poll attachment formulas. But they still end up falling, you know, it's hard to say whether they result in sort of some unfair subsidy or anything like that. It doesn't appear that they necessarily do. And I think I'll also say that in our research, you know, we have found that they do increase the cost for providers. I think one provider who we talked to, who was working in West Tennessee, said that when a new TVA poll attachment rate was implemented, let me see if I can get this number right, yeah, it increased their poll attachment cost by about 150% for a project that they were working on. But at the same time, in our research, and we've gone around looking for projects and what the effect of the poll attachment fees are, we have not yet found an example of a project where the project would have been completed but for the poll attachment fees. So it's kind of worth trying to put that in perspective of, yes, they do, they certainly add costs, but we haven't yet found an example where that was the determining factor in whether a project went forward.
I believe Darryl had a question.
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to ask about whether the issue of transience comes up in the adoption conversation? Just thinking about, at least in this part of the state with, you know, low-income demographic, where costs would be an issue as well, you know, there's a lot of moving around that goes on, and just wanted to know if that was something that was called out of your assessment.
So I apologize, we actually did not look at that in our assessment. We didn't, we didn't get that detailed with our assessment. But I think that that also, though, highlights the importance, if you're going to develop, if a local government's going to start working on a broadband adoption effort, the importance of understanding the needs of your local community and being able to design something that could meet those needs, because it's, you're absolutely right, particularly for low-income populations or populations that are transient, giving them access is, they're going to have their own special needs when it comes to getting access, and so figuring out a way to meet those would be important.
Matt, I'm going to jump in now. You have, one of your slides spoke to recommendations that Tessa was making, and one of them, I think, was at the top of the page, was continue the grant opportunities. And I think you said that those grant opportunities work through ECD. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And with that being said, I don't know, I wouldn't expect you to know the granular details of those grant opportunities. And of course, it's a recommendation, so there's no guarantee that they would move forward. But if they would move forward, it seems to me that there's an opportunity for communities, and even the encouragement through what the, the way the grant is written, to encourage local communities, local governments, to work closely with their school districts, their healthcare providers, et cetera, to band together to draft a comprehensive grant application that would then allow some of these rural areas to be more successful in having the funding to move forward, and obviously to pay for the broadband access. We know it's expensive, and so do you know much about that? And can you find out?
So, so I will say that as part of, so as part of the ECD scoring process for its grants, the, they score the grant based on a combination of both subjective and objective metrics. And so one of the things that they consider is community support for a project, and whether a project is tailored to meet local needs, as well as, let's see if I can remember here, off the top of my head. Oh, also, whether the project includes any specific broadband adoption efforts included in it, whether there's any specific effort there. So that type of coming together to show community support for a project, to build a project that brings a bunch of different community players together, you know, I obviously can't speak for ECD, but that seems like it's the spirit of what they're going for in how they, how they evaluate, or some part of the process for evaluating grants. Now, as to whether, you know, I think part of the evaluation too is determining whether the grantee, determining whether the grant, determining whether the grantee has the, sort of the financial and the technical experience that would be necessary to carry out the project. So I think just making sure that there are, that there are individuals within that, or entities within that partnership that would meet that criteria would be helpful as well.
Is, who is the grantee then? Is it the local government? Is it the broadband provider?
The grantee is typically a broadband provider. In this case, I think, I don't, well, you know, except to the extent, you know, if you want to get technical, to the extent that a municipal utility is part of the local government, that the applicants so far are broadband providers. They're either for-profit or nonprofit, private entities, or are municipal electric systems. So far, I don't believe there have been any local governments just aside from that, that have applied for grant funding. But again, I'd have to defer to ECD to get that specifically.
That's okay. Do you have any idea where your recommendations are in the process? So if those, especially the grants, do you know if those would move forward? And when would you know?
So I don't unfortunately have any inside information on the legislative process where any of our recommendations, whether they'll be taken up at all by the General Assembly, or if they are, what will come of them. So I look forward to finding that out just as much as you do during this legislative session. And, yeah, no, I don't have anything. I don't have any inside information on that. That's above my pay grade.
That's okay and understandable. And just one other question on your barriers page, you mentioned lack of interest or need on the part of some. How do you quantify that? And how did you make that determination? Bottom line.
So, you know, I would say that we didn't necessarily try to quantify what that means. We took that from other resources and sort of like specifically, specifically looking at the Pew Research survey, and I'm happy to share their survey results with you. I'll send the link to you all so you can have a look at that. But they, because they've conducted this survey every year for a number of years. Effectively, what they do is they just ask people, so do you subscribe to home broadband service? And if you don't, here's a list of potential reasons which of those apply to you. And so there's roughly 80% or so of people who answered that question who said that they're just not interested, that they don't plan to subscribe to broadband in the future, so they don't see a value, effectively, they don't see a value proposition in doing that. That's not exactly a quantitative, it's probably more of a qualitative answer, but that's, that's where we're looking at that from various other surveys that have been conducted. I know the U.S. Government Accountability Office also did some research where they looked at families with schoolchildren, and that sort of lack of interest or perceived lack of need was one of the, appeared to be one of the reasons why some families gave for not subscribing to home broadband service.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments for Matt?
It would be interesting to know now that COVID, since your data is one to two years old, how much more people are looking at wanting that broadband now versus, you know, if they said that they didn't need it or wasn't interested in it in 2018, 2019, how has that changed this year, this past year?
No, yeah, I think that would be really interesting if, you know, I don't know that Pew, I kept looking for their 20 results of their 2020 survey and never found it before we published our report. So it'll be interesting if they publish another, if they run that survey again this year, what results they come up with, or if there'll be any specific changes. You know, I think what'll also be interesting is to take a look at that, the broadband adoption percentages reported to the FCC. If you see changes in, you know, obviously there's a lag, we won't know for December of 2020, we won't know that till, you know, about a year from now. But it will be interesting to see if there's been any spikes there simply based on changes in the state of the world.
Building on that, Matt, first, thank you for providing this information. I feel like this is a topic that we've all actively been trying to educate ourselves on, given just the, you know, extreme importance that it takes right now during the middle of this pandemic, but, you know, even outside of that, how important it is to think about for our communities across the state. So I guess a couple of questions. Thinking about the data piece, Tara, our research partner at Vanderbilt, did a survey last fall of teachers and educators, and certainly from that data, you know, they cited that uniformly as the top concern they had for students and for, you know, online education this year. So, I mean, I think, you know, it's a bit anecdotal, but I think certainly in terms of the school factor, it continues to be so critical to get access. And then do you have any advice for us in terms of a body that's not directly charged with the responsibility for providing access, certainly, but the kinds of questions we should be asking? I mean, is it about the data mapping that you mentioned? I've heard that and other things that I've listened to and tried to read about this topic, that that's part of the issue, is that we don't have the right data in terms of who doesn't have access currently? Are there questions we should be asking about how the federal funds that are, you know, designed to help support increased access are being used? But as you're thinking about closing out with us, any parting words of advice?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, I don't know that I have a whole lot, just beyond the recommendations themselves from the Commission, I mean, I think those, we tried to sort of encapsulate where we were with our findings and, you know, just the benefits of having better data, continuing where we are and potentially increasing our support for the grant program, continuing support for broadband adoption efforts where we find ways to support those, and just looking at there, if there are other ways to, to, you know, reduce restrictions on providers and then how to make, make it possible for them to serve areas. You know, I don't know that I have any advice for other entities, you know, I almost have to defer to you. You'll know better what's in the board's wheelhouse and obviously what, what role you can play in this. Yeah.
Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. That's helpful even just that. I mean, certainly having more information along the lines of what you provided us will help us ask good questions and nothing else. And it's just super important for us all to understand, you know, how to push for the additional access that we need, so.
You know, just in terms of the discussion and how it'll take place or has taken place at the General Assembly, you know, any time that it looks like something related to this topic is going to be gaining any momentum, you know, we'll certainly weigh in with the appropriate legislators, and if there's an opportunity, you know, a hearing on this topic that, you know, looks like there's actually going to be some, something come out of it for sure, I'll be sure to let all the board members know and, you know, so we'll have a good opportunity to weigh in on that subject. It's, it was brought to light for the umpteen zillionth time by the Eric Commission. It's pretty clear to any observer of education how important this is. So I would say there might be some more emphasis behind it, but I guess we'll know a little more on Monday when the executive budget comes out.
Nathan, thank you for adding that, because I know we've had conversations about, does there need to be this group of people that come together, whether it's, you know, legislators as well as the administration, the governor's office, his people, state board, and other stakeholders in this arena, that we have this common understanding of what we need to do moving forward, and realizing we're counting on legislation for the funding, the legislators for the funding and all that. So that's a good point, and I think we'll certainly be looking to you to share what information you hear when you're on the Hill or observing from afar, since we know you're not able to go there very often. Again, Matt, thank you so much. I don't know that anyone else has any questions for you. Clearly, a lot of great information, very complicated to digest, but you certainly helped us to understand it far better than we did before you came today to share it with us. So thank you so much.
And thank you all for your time. It's been a pleasure for me.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Brittany Kendrick with License Interactions.
Eric, good afternoon. I am Brittany Kendrick, the Assistant General Counsel for the State Board. Along with my colleagues Pat Madison, the Staff Attorney for the State Board, we have before you the staff recommendations for educator license discipline. First, we wanted to notify you all that for tomorrow's agenda, item 5H, which is Triosha Webster, and 5I, John Young, on the agenda for tomorrow, will need to be pulled for separate discussion and a vote during the meeting. Item 5I, John Young, he properly requested to speak on his behalf at the meeting, and that request was granted. For item 5H, Ms. Triosha Webster, her attorney, Lorraine Wade, requested to speak on her behalf at tomorrow's meeting. Technically, she was just shy of the 48-hour requirement for the request, so during the meeting tomorrow, you all will have to vote whether or not to suspend the rule, I mean, suspend the policy to allow her to speak on Ms. Webster's behalf at the meeting. And then secondly, we are here today just to see if you all have any other items tomorrow that you want us to pull for separate discussion, or if there are any questions that you all may have that we can kind of clarify ahead of tomorrow's meeting. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions, Brittany? Brittany, thank you so much. I think you prepared us with what we need to know for tomorrow's meeting, and look forward to that discussion. We're at the end of the agenda, that's just a few comments to make. I just want to say thank you for all of you for your engagement today. I think we had some great discussions, and we learned a lot in new areas that we were not previously familiar with, at least not very much. I do look forward to seeing each of you tomorrow for our first quarterly board meeting of 2021. And unless there are any other comments from anyone else, and I'll stop for a second to see if there are, then I'm going to say the purpose of the committee of the whole has, having been fulfilled, therefore I declare it and the board officially adjourned. Thank you so much, and I'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks, everyone. See you in the morning.
Thank you.